Lansing City Council, March twenty second. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Certainly. Councilmember Betts.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
I am present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
President participating remotely from Lansing.
And Councilmember Wood.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
And has Councilmember Dunbar joined us?
It looks like she's just on her way in, Mr. Clerk, so why don't we just give her a second to mark herself as present? Councilmember Dunbar, are you here? There you are.
I am, President participating remotely from South Lansing. Trying to get, look at that, I can put a flashbulb right in my face.
As the sun goes down.
As the sun goes down.
Yeah.
And we have eight members present to forum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The first item on our agenda is our meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anybody? Councilmembers, the mayor or the clerk would wish that we keep in our thoughts this evening?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, seeing I will.
Same thing I did.
Wait, I have one. I have one, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't know who knows this and who doesn't, I just found out. I would like us all to keep in our prayers Pastor Jesse Brown of Rivers of Life Church, who I was informed passed away today. He had been sick, although I didn't realize he was that sick. I talked to him last week. And he passed away today. So if we can all keep in our prayers Pastor Jesse Brown of Rivers of Life Church in Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing others asked at the council and our public, please keep in mind Pastor Jesse Brown and his and family this evening as we reflect. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Also, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are to the consideration of late items.
Mr. Vice President, do you have a late item for us tonight? Or do I, one moment, let me see if I've got, I know we have one.
Yep, sorry. I'm just trying to unmute myself. Yeah, so what we have today is we actually have a late item that pertains to the CDVG home and ESG allocation. We do this every single year. Unfortunately, our economic development and planning department, they just, they just missed the deadline. And so this would be for referral only. I would assume that it would be referred to committee of the whole. And it would be to introduce and set at some point a public hearing for April twenty sixth. So with that being said, I would move to suspend Rule nine to allow for the late item.
Very good. Yes, and you're correct, it is for referral tonight. So we'll need them, we have a motion in front of us to suspend the rule to allow for the consideration of the late item for the referral. Is there any discussion? All right, Mr. Clerk.
We have Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Is there an A C? The item will be added for referral, which takes us to the special ceremonies and presentations. And we have the fiscal year twenty one, twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two budget presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Tonight, we have with us Mayor Shore and his finance team to present to us their budget for the year. That should have been dropped in your mailbox earlier today. If you hadn't seen it already, it should be there. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you. This starts our budget process that will conclude on May seventeenth.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We have been working on this right up until this morning. My apologies for getting you the budget book today. We had hoped for Friday, but we worked on it through the weekend and this morning. Today, we present to you the city council, the administration's two thousand twenty one budget proposal. I'm going to give a little bit of a, kind of a few highlights, and then Rob and or Jake will give you the top lines, and then we can take any questions, or if you want to just chew on it, we can answer questions over the next few months. There's good news and there's bad news. So I do look forward to the conversation and discussion with you all about this. As you all know, we're dealing with the impacts of COVID and the shutdowns of businesses and people working remotely and some layoffs in some industries. You all know, we cut twelve and a half million dollars last year between the budget proposal and when we passed it. We also know that tax revenues are generally down for the pandemic. They're down between twenty and twenty five percent, which is actually worse than the Great Recession, when the city saw fifteen percent reduction over two years. So what we have projections for revenues, please remember that some are going to continue to be in flux as we look at the future of the coronavirus COVID nineteen and see how it affects the workers and the businesses in our city. We don't yet know how long state employees will be working from home. We don't know how long retail and restaurants will be limited capacity, or if they'll have to shut down again. I really hope not. Certainly, we have vaccinations, and we continue to strongly encourage everyone to get the vaccination. But the sooner we get to herd immunity, the sooner we can get people back to work and back to our businesses and state government, which of course is one of our biggest employers. So we do have some good news for the current, the current year budget, the one that we're finishing up now, that will be finished up in the end of June. The budget book that you have will reflect additional dollars added to the current budget. We received dollars from the federal government that we use to assist many of our departments, and those dollars are reflected in this budget. It includes five point nine million dollars from the public safety, public health reimbursement, and one and about one point four million for the coronavirus local government grants, which were part of the two thousand twenty cares legislation. You'll also, in the current year budget, see a two and a half million dollar increase in our reserves for the current year, as we were able to compile and file the previously unreported Affordable Care Act information for the city to the federal government for years two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. So we're able to reverse the the amount owed to the federal government. So you'll see an increase of two and a half million dollars. Moving into into the budget proposal for for next year for the the two thousand twenty two budget. Certainly, you all know, we have good news and that the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan, which will allow us to to backfill some of the losses that we have in the current budget. The budget book in front of you backfills about fifteen and a quarter million dollars in income tax losses, which was a hit to our general fund over the course of the pandemic. It backfills about seven hundred thousand dollars for our EDC, which we spent to assist our small businesses here in Lansing. It backfills about eight million dollars in parking losses to that enterprise fund. And it includes about one and a half million in losses to Lepfa for the closed Lansing Center and for the stadium losses. And we'll ensure that we can reopen the Lansing Center, and it'll, it will ensure that we can reopen the Lansing Center and have groups in there once again, hopefully soon. We were also able to backfill and include in this budget dollars, and I'll talk about this in a minute, for the neighborhood assistance, for the arts, sister cities, and my brother's keeper, facade and things like that. So we restored those cuts and were able to reinstate those into the current budget. But just so that everyone remembers, it's not just our general fund that faces challenges. Like I said, the Lansing Center has been closed for over a year, our parking fund faces challenges. So we're going to restore dollars into those losses as well. The one thing that was not allowed in, well, two things that were not allowed in the federal rescue or the American Rescue Act were dollars for roads, unfortunately. But that's because there's going to be a federal infrastructure bill, and I am optimistic that they will pass that, and I'll continue to work with the U.S. Conference of Mayors on that. They also didn't allow dollars to be used for pensions. And we're still waiting on the U.S. Department of Treasury for some of the other specifics of these funds. So in the current budget in front of you, we added everything that I mentioned. I also added a few new items to this budget that many were were asked for by city council and from from other partners, and I'm proud to have been able to work with you all to get them in. As you know, gun violence continues to be an issue in Lansing and everywhere. We'll continue to take many guns off the street through our violent crime initiative. But we've heard a lot at city council and from the county and from other partners about the advanced peace initiative to reduce gun violence by utilizing street outreach. And I have included funding for that program for the two thousand twenty two calendar year in the community agency section of the budget. So as long as Ingham County also provides the funding that they're planning to commit, then I have put that money in the budget for your consideration to include when you pass the budget in May. I also want to point out, we have dollars in, I'm one of the first members of Cincinnati Mayor John Cranley's gun violence consortium, and as part of this effort, we're piloting new gun technologies here in Lansing that will prevent guns from being used by anyone other than their owners, whether illegal guns or, you know, accidental or kids getting a hold of their parents' guns. We all saw that last year, and we had a young person kill themselves with their their mother's gun. The technology our police officers are going to be piloting will help save lives, and our membership in this consortium will help us to be leaders in this effort. So that will be a part of of our gun violence efforts as well. We also continue, need to continue to ensure we're not criminalizing those with with mental illness or homelessness or other issues which may result in a visit from a police officer. We don't criminalize these people here in Lansing, and I'm proud of that. We have made Lansing the first city in the state to have a social worker working hand in hand with our police department. And my budget proposes to add a second social worker to assist Jan Bidwell and to help with those challenges. And again, that was something that I believe you all included in your budget priorities resolution. Additionally, we are, I have included in my budget, my proposed budget, funding for what are called two community health workers in conjunction with the Ingham County Health Department. These are social workers that assist emergency dispatch so that non-emergency and social needs calls go to social service agencies. We piloted this with the county previously under a grant that was provided to us, and this will ensure that social service needs are connected with social service providers rather than sending our emergency personnel there when they need to be in other places helping out. So I'm excited that we can once again work with the county health department, and I have proposed including two of those as well. So you'll see two within our emergency services and two for our police department for a total of four social workers. To ensure better transparency and faster response for those who seek public information, included a new additional FOIA officer in our police department. You all know FOIA, we get a lot of FOIA requests, especially for body camera footage, and it's really tough and time consuming as these videos have to be watched and redacted. So this will help get that information out faster. Also, in the police department, I included new radio testing equipment for the police department, which is needed as a result of conversions to finalize the process. I'm almost on, I promise. To ensure that we're safe in our courts and in city hall, we included funding for the requested new metal detectors that they have asked for. It's been a request for many years from the courts, and we provided those to ensure safety and security. In the fire department, we know that we have incredible staff in our emergency operations center from the flood a few years ago to all their pandemic work for the last year. They've done a great job, and they had some necessary funding needs, so we included funding for them. We also included funding to finalize our siren upgrades. So that way, we can finally get that fixed and make sure that our sirens, our warning sirens work. I'll also point out here, while not in our budget, our fire department has major needs for firehouse repairs and replacement and for training. And we're exploring a bond to take to the voters. We recently had a fire department bond roll off, and we're exploring a bond to take to voters. I am not including that as part of this budget, but we are going to get that to you soon, hopefully for the November ballot, but we're still working that out. But we will discuss that with council in the very near future. A few others are our Chief Strategy Officer Judy Keeler. Been working really hard to to identify and create efficiencies, but she needs some assistance. So you'll see an increase in the mayor's office budget so that she can have some needed temporary assistance. She's going to utilize a business analyst position that will look, help her research and navigate the many ideas and the many different departments in the city to save some money, and she is confident that is going to save more money than it costs. We've made great progress with roads and sidewalks. We budgeted six point one five million from our Act fifty one funding for sidewalk gap repair, major streets, local streets and bridge rehab. I also added in dollars from the general fund for sidewalks. So combined with the dollars that that we have and the dollars that we'll be putting in, we'll have about five hundred thousand dollars in sidewalk money, and Director Kilpatrick has indicated he'll probably use two hundred and fifty in the spring and two hundred and fifty in the fall. So we'll make sure to to fund sidewalk replacement. For Councilman Garza and Councilman Hussein, we've included our hundred and thirty five, hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for the renewal of the lease for the South Lansing Library. I want to thank both you gentlemen. Both of you were very, very helpful as we negotiated the new lease for that. You were both tremendous advocates for the South Side, and I do want to thank you both for that. And we have finalized that lease, and the funding is here for this, and I told, I think I told Adam I would mention that. We also included the additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars as a result of the HRCS Basic Human Needs ordinance that was passed two weeks ago at council. The additional hundred and thirty thousand just for equity efforts, I know Councilman Spatafor pushed that, and Council President Spatafor pushed that. So it'll be an extra hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It'll go specifically for equity efforts through our Basic Human Needs Fund. And we'll have that list to you. You know, Councilman Wood always asks, and she should. We'll have that list to you, but because of the recent changes in the ordinance, it's not ready just yet, but we'll have it to you before you start considering Kim Coleman is on top of that. Talking about equity, in addition to the my brother's keeper funds that we we put back into the budget, we're also recommending investment and funding for the racial justice and equity efforts, including training, policy updates, and other implementation of the the Racial Justice and Equity Alliance report that we expect to receive in a few weeks. For our parks infrastructure, we're mostly going along with the Parks Board recommendations. I know several of you have served on the Parks Board, I think Councilwoman Spitzley and Councilman Hussein. So we're going to go along with those recommendations. But we are recommending a little bit extra grant match money for for fit lots and other things like that, which have been tremendously successful and for other similar spaces which are popular in the city. Last but not least, for legacy costs, we do have an additional three and a half million dollars in savings every year due to the recent retiree healthcare changes. But our pension boards also just did the responsible thing and adjusted assumptions for our pensions. And that'll ensure that our estimates are correct long term. We'll also increase our costs short term. So we'll see an increase in pension costs. But again, it was the right thing to do because it was responsible. So for our legacy costs, we broke that out in the budget. It used to be they would be part of every department. Now we have taken it out of each department and created its own separate category, and that will go from forty million last year to forty five million in the proposed, in the proposed budget. So with all of that being said, the budget before you is still projected to end the fiscal year with about fourteen million in our fund balance, which is a significant increase and brings us closer to the twelve percent that we strive to get to. And as a result of the the hard work done, I'll note that we don't need to utilize the tax anticipation note that council previously authorized. So that's good news. We're building back our reserves while while making sure we pay our bills. We're going to continue to look for possible revenue enhancements. Judy Keeler is working on some really exciting things and looking at both savings and revenues and growth. Andy Kilpatrick is working with Johnson Controls to find building efficiencies that can make us more sustainable and save money. Desiree Kirkland is going to be using the state tapes to see how we can increase income tax collections. Robert Whitigan is implementing stronger financial controls through the city. And there are just a variety of others. So the the last thing I'll mention, I know I said that before, is Governor Whitmer also proposed in her state budget to basically repay cities for income taxes that they've lost due to COVID. And in her budget proposal, the city is supposed to get about six million dollars. We did not include that in this budget because it hasn't passed the legislature yet. And it potentially won't until either July or maybe even September. But when it does pass the legislature, we will come to you with a supplemental appropriation for October because that's when the state fiscal year starts. So when that budget money gets in, we will come to you with an appropriation for the additional six million dollars. I'm optimistic about this budget and that it addresses our needs and priorities. But we continue to to look at at all options and work with you all. I know you all have other priorities that I'd like to continue to talk about. But that's those kind of the the highlights, and Rob and Jake can quickly give you the top lines, and then we can take any questions. Thank you, Mr. President. So I was trying to go as quick as possible.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. There's a lot in there. So would Jake like to go now, or just council have questions before we start on that? Raise your hand now if you'd like to ask questions now, or if you want to move on to Rob and Jake, and then we can come back for questions. Looks like you, if the floor is yours, Mr. Whitigan, Mr. Power.
Let's see, do you have a screen sharing rights here? You, yes. Excellent.
Yes.
All right. And so you should be able to see, hopefully, a full screen of a PowerPoint. Unfortunately, the mayor was very thorough with his comments tonight, and so what I'll be able to tell you today will be fairly little to add on top of that. Overall, this is our fiscal year twenty twenty two. Citywide, we're looking to spend about two hundred thirty seven point one million dollars. This is a one point two percent increase from previous years. One of our goals this year has been budget transparency. And so you'll notice that we've broken out internal service charges such as pension and OPAD costs, IT, fleet equipment. We have broken these out of departments to show them separately so you can see more accurately the relative cost of general public services, police, fire, community development, general government, rec and culture. And just get a broader idea of year to year changes as you look through the details of our budget. Overall, we are fairly happy to continue support for infrastructure and for the community in our budget. That includes about two point seven million for major streets and bridges, one point eight million for local street repairs, and two hundred twenty five thousand for new sidewalks, repairs, gap closure and trailways. Moving on to the general fund, that our budget is one hundred fifty one point two million. This is a ten percent increase from our projected fiscal twenty one budget. Overall, about five percent of that comes from the enormous cuts that we took from due to COVID that has been restored in part thanks to the assistance of the federal government, helping the city of Lansing build back veterans of course. Overall, we restore fund balance to fourteen point six million, which is a major accomplishment of the city. We have continued support for neighborhoods and economic development, included funding for art and facade improvements. And we also have taken into consideration the increase in human service ordinance in addressing racial justice and equity, including about one hundred thirty five thousand as part of that formula. We also include three hundred thousand in the human human resources budget for general training and fulfilling the recommendations of the mayor's Racial Justice Alliance Board. Looking at the general fund, you'll see that retirement and fixed benefits continue to be the vast majority of the largest cut of our pie here, followed by police, fire, general government, public service. We're happy to have six percent combined in community development, recreation, culture, four percent. And then maintaining our city infrastructure, allowing us to be here today with information technology. Another cost. Our revenues come from four main sources. So property taxes are the best majority at thirty five, followed by income taxes being twenty two percent. One of the more variable sources of our budget, return on equity is nineteen percent. And state revenues come out to about fifteen percent. Of these revenues, property taxes are the most stable at this time. Income taxes face a lot of uncertainty. Return on equity is a fixed payment for this year. So we've negotiated, as you remember, fixed twenty five million dollar payments for fiscal years twenty one and twenty two. And then state shared revenues are the assistance we get from the state, of course. Looking at property taxes, the city's millage levy is nineteen point four four mils. Back in twenty thirteen, voters approved a four mil increase on top of the fifteen point four four mils being levied at the time. Five mil, five mils of these nineteen point four four mils are dedicated towards public safety and infrastructure. So that amounts to seven million for police and fire, four point seven million for roads and parks, thirty four million not assigned. For the fiscal twenty two budget, we have taken into account increased tax appeals anticipated relative to previous years. Income tax estimates include data from early tax refunds. There's been a significant impact due to remote work. The treasure has been very deep in read analyzing returns from residents versus non-residents. There's continued, there's continued uncertainty in this area of our budget due to the COVID nineteen emergency uncertainties regarding return to in-person and long-term economic impacts from businesses downtown and their ability to withstand the short-term pressures of COVID nineteen. Operationally, we're happy to report that the treasury is accepting all ten forty EZ tax forms, and so that will be available on the city website. State revenue. Revenue sharing is coming about to fifteen point six million. We get about three point two million for our reimbursement for the fire services, which comes to the share of our fire department budget that goes towards protecting state-owned facilities. The personal property tax reimbursement budgeted at nine hundred thousand. And medical marijuana at three hundred fifty thousand. Overall, you can see in this chart the effects of state revenue sharing cuts over the past twenty years. As you can see, from two thousand two levels, if we held those constant, we would receive, be receiving an annual amount of approximately eight point five million dollars over the cumulative period between two thousand two and twenty twenty two, our projected budget that amounts to a hundred forty nine million dollars that the state has taken from our budget. So for pension and OPAD, we are increasing our contributions by three point zero five million for police and fire pensions and one point five zero five million for year's pension payments. Police and Fire is entirely supported by the general fund. The one point zero five is a mix between the various funds of the city. Overall, about seventy six percent of our fixed benefits are covered by the general fund. This comes to a total of about sixty point seven million overall, forty six point four going to the general fund. This is an area too where this is all based on our assumptions, and so you recall that pursuant to the advice of our pension boards, we have adopted more conservative estimates for our budget. And so, as you can see here, the pension and healthcare payments for the future can be affected by market conditions, of which COVID nineteen is certainly a very strong reality there. Moving on to stepping, our public service department, we are happy to roll out the city three one one program. The intent of this being that a citizen can call this single hotline across the city and their anything that they're working to solve will be helped by an individual employee who will help them through the process, start to finish. We have budgeted new staff for this, but are expecting transfers from existing positions to offset some of the cost. We have included a social work in our budget to provide additional support to the community. And for operational transparency, we are adding a FOIA analyst to provide more timely response to public requests. Overall, we are seeking to respond directly to fiscal challenges in part due to the support of our state and federal government where possible. We are continuing to invest in public safety and infrastructure while also supporting our neighborhoods, arts and culture, and local community at large. We're inclusive, including funds to address racial justice and equity, including implementing the mayor's racial justice and equity alliance plan. We're funding neighborhood grants, art grants, sister cities, my brother's keeper. And we are implementing best practices citywide to effectively circle Lansing community in ways large and small to the best of our ability. And that pretty much concludes our presentation, so. We will be available over the next period of several months as you adopt, discuss, and eventually adopt a budget for the city of Lansing. So we look forward to the questions that we'll get from you.
Thank you, Jake. Rob, did you have anything before I go on to questions?
Thank you, Jake. Rob, did you have anything before I go on to questions?
No, I guess I could quickly, I'm sure we're gonna talk about it, and Mayor has mentioned the proposed federal dollars which were passed as part of the American Recovery Protection Actively. So there's the payment breakdown is there's two payments. We'll get approximately half within the first 60 days and approximately the second half one year after the first check is received. The number has been reported, or the numbers have been reported pretty widely at 51 million. I did find out today on a, on a presentation with Michigan Municipal League that the 51 million is what the congressional staffers came up with, and that's subject to final auditing from the US Department of Treasury, and they believe that should be done in mid-April. We do have until the end of 2024 to spend the money, you know, slowly and, and make, you know, the purpose of this is to manage the, the long tail of this economic impact caused by the pandemic. So it's not recommended that we spend it all this year or not, or within two years, but to slowly kind of burn it down between now and 2024. We are still waiting from additional guidance from US Department of Treasury. So that's anticipated in May, April, which will be before the budget starts here on July 1. So we won't be spending dollars until we get that final guidance from US Treasury. And if you have any questions on that specifically that haven't been answered, get them to Jake or I or Mayor, and we're able to submit questions to the National League of Cities, and they're able to work with US Treasury to ask those questions, and then they'll eventually be put in the Q and A. So for, you know, perfect example is pensions are specifically excluded from being paid down with these dollars. However, it doesn't mention at all OPEB or retiree healthcare. So does that mean, you know, could we use that to fund retiree healthcare? Good question. We did submit that to the National League of Cities, and we hope to find out in mid-April or so when they release more details on it. So the only other thing I think Jake mentioned in his email for all you budget gurus out there anxiously awaiting the line item detailed budget for some leisurely reading, we are anticipating, you know, we anticipate that request and we are it'll be provided to council members and the internal auditor as supplementary information by Friday. So we will get that out shortly, and we, and we look, like Jake said, we look forward to further discussion at future council meetings as we embark on this three-month, three-month-long budget journey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have three hands up so far. We'll start with Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to know, do you know we're getting the line item information this Friday? Where, when you talk about the racial equity, the My Brothers Keeper, and some of those other ones, where are those line items located? What department will those be located?
My Brother's Keeper has always been in the, the community agency funding the, that's where it's, that's where it's always been. The racial justice and equity, the dollars regarding the the, the alliance, the implementation, that's likely going to be in HR because most of those are HR implementation trainings and other things like that. And that's what the, the Alliance folks have told us that's where that's going. And then the equity dollars from HR, from the Basic Human Needs Fund will be in, in HRCS.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, will My Brother's Keeper be in HRCS? Where do you think it was gonna be?
It's community agency. It's, it's in essence like a general line in the budget. And I'm, I'm, I'm almost positive it's always, is that right, Jake? Is it?
Yeah, so My Brother's Keeper will be part of the city-supported agencies.
That's what it is.
Departmental section.
Yep, that's where it's always been.
And then, yeah, so the the 0.1% for the basic human services increase, that'll be in the HRCS budget. And then the 300,000 for the mayor's I'm forgetting the acronym.
Racial Justice and Equity Report.
Yes, that'll be in HR.
You should have that by, by the end of May.
And I did ask about the Advance Peace Initiative, the funding and where that's going to be.
Yep, that'll be in city-supported agencies as well.
So that's separate. That's in essence, non-departmental.
And the dollar amount is that has been?
We recommended the 240 that was asked for. So that's 240 that was asked for, for the year. Now, I'm not sure how they're going to navigate. Our fiscal year doesn't match up with the county's fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts in, in July, and the county starts in January. So we have to wait for the county to pass theirs, and then we start that appropriation in 2022. So we have to navigate how those two connect. If, if that's the amount that comes out of council, but we recommended the 240 for 2022. And as you know, we don't, we can't bind future councils, so that was, that was the option for this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Wood is after that.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. You know, I appreciate the, the executive summary there. Now, when we talk about, you know, needs and wants, I'm curious to know how much money is going to go into the art and facade improvements?
The same amount that we're in the last budget two years ago and that we proposed last year. So the art, I believe, was one, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake, 162,500, and I think the facade was 175. Does that sound right?
Yeah, 167,500.
Okay, 167,500, 175. That was the amount that we passed two years ago. And it was what we proposed last year, and then it all got struck when we had to cut the 12 and a half million.
Okay. Now, when you, when you talked earlier about funding for LFD, the Lansing Fire Department, I see that the revenue sharing is 3.25 million. Is that included in the funding for the LFD, or is there another, another amount that's going to be going to the LFD other than their percentage of the budget that was on that pie graph?
Yeah, so the LFD gets 1.5 mils from the property tax, and then the 3.2 million is reimbursement from the state for their services. However, as far as revenues go, that goes into the general pot of the general fund and gets swallowed up by their budget, which is approaching 30 million, or probably more than that. Let me pull it up. But it is more than consumed by the general operations of the department.
Okay, two, two last questions. Sorry, guys. The 4.7 million that's allocated for roads and parks, do you have a certain amount of money that's going to go for the, strictly for the roads and strictly for the parks?
Yes. So let me pull up.
The Parks, the Parks Millage goes only to the parks, but the Parks Millage is only a small part of our parks budget. But that, those dollars go for parks, infrastructure, and camps and things like that. So we've got the, we've got the list from the Parks Board. So that's the kind of the CIP for the parks, and then we, we fund them out of our general fund budget. And that's separate from our roads, because our roads are funded from, from Public Act $51. So they're each kind of segregated pots that are dedicated to those, those departments.
Yeah, and if you look at your budget book, you can find those amounts on page 11. Under property taxes, you'll find the non-dedicated portion, 3.525 million for police, 3.5, the same amount to fire, and then 2.35 million each to roads and parks.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is that public service, the 311, is that going to be 24/7? Like, or is it going to be the normal hours of public service?
I would have to confirm that fact, too.
Yeah, we have to talk to Mumbi. Chris Mumbi is, is running that. I don't think it's 24 hours. I think it's, I think it's workday. It's just, you know, getting a human on the phone and putting those, those bodies in one place instead of having them separated out. But Christopher Mumbi is running that, so we can, we can have him answer that question through the committee process or, you know, one-on-one or however you want it.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Wood, then Dunbar.
Thank you, President Spatyswar. I appreciate the fact that you anticipated my question on the line item. I still am baffled and will be baffled every year under the fact that I'm not sure how you put a budget together without having the line item first. But, you know, I, I get that. I appreciate the fact that I can guarantee that I'll have that on Friday. Having said that, my next question has to do with the Peace Alliance portion that we're working with the county. Since it's going to HRCS, I'm assuming then that, or maybe I'm wrong, but I'm assuming we're going to enter into a contract with Ingham County, and they will be the ones that will be doing the legwork on that. Am I correct?
You're half correct. The Advance Peace is, it's one of our city-supported agencies, so it's not going through HRCS. But we will absolutely have a contract. We will absolutely have a contract with the county to make sure that this is going on in the city of Lansing especially. I love our neighbors, but this is going to be for the city. So we'll have a contract. I, you know, I don't know. We'll have to navigate if it's us, the county, and Advance Peace, or if it's us with the county and the county with Advance Peace. We'll have to navigate the legalities of that as we, as we move forward. It was the county health department that, that originally presented to both you and to me. And we'll have to navigate exactly how the contract works, but it will certainly be a contract for the, the, the use of those dollars and making sure that they're used again where they're supposed to. We also want metrics. You know, they've, they've talked to us about metrics in Stockton, California, and another city that I can't remember. And we want to make sure we're getting the same metrics to see what's working and what's not. So all of that will be in the contract.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, it's my understanding that the contract goes to the Michigan Public Health Institute. So just to, just to. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know Councilmember Spitzley and Dunbar and a few others have been involved as well, and, and we're, we're interested in providing the funding and MPHI in the county and, and Advance Peace will all be part of it. There'll be a contract, absolutely.
And then looking at the budget, the budget that you have before us and the revenue dollars is based on the fact that you believe that the millage will pass this year for the fire, police, and public services. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, we are, Jake, correct me if I'm wrong. We did, we budgeted 19.44. If the millage were to not pass, council can still, still assess up to 18.97. But yeah, we're, we're budgeting for it to pass. That's a good point. Is that right, Jake? The 19.4 is, 0.44 is budgeted?
I believe our triples would hit the next fiscal year, not this upcoming one.
Oh, is it next? All right, Chris is, Chris swoops, nodding his head also. So that's next fiscal year? Okay. So you're a year ahead. We'll, we'll have that problem next year because we can still collect through the end of December of this year before it expires. So we'll have collected that anyway. Thank you.
All right. And, and the millage before for police and fire went for personnel. It helped pay for the staffing of police and, and fire.
Correct. That's the same language that we sent you, right? I think we sent you that language last week, and it should be the same language.
It's in this packet for referral tonight.
Is it? Okay, then you have it for referral tonight. Thank you.
And then and maybe Robert, Jake can answer this. Have you had any conversations with the tax tribunal? Or were the assessor to determine what the potential is for people coming before the tax tribunal based on property taxes? I see Rob shaking his head, so.
Rob, Sharon was, was part of a lot of our, Sharon and, and Desiree both were part of a lot of our budget conversations for both income tax and for appeals.
Yeah, the assessor's been very helpful in sharing any information with us as it comes in.
So do you have even a projected number of what you feel that we, you know, have the the anticipation of, of filings?
Sharon's got, we can have her discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll circle up with her.
She's got, I'd say, I don't know that she would, she would predict. She doesn't want to lose her license, so I don't think she would predict.
Councilmember Wood, I don't want to interrupt, but one thing I think we're going to do this year a little differently, too, is we're going to have a, a, a session or a significant portion of a session dedicated to a revenue discussion in context of all of the changing revenue streams that we've got in front of us. We had talked about doing it before the budget presentation, but with the American Rescue Plan coming, we had no idea what to say. It would have been wrong the minute it was presented.
Thank you. And my last question is, I thought we had had some discussion that we might be seeing as part of this budget proposal, just a look at what a five-year budget might look like is. Is, I haven't gone page by page with this because we got it this afternoon. So could someone tell me whether that's in it or not?
It's not. It's, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
And if not, do we think that we'll be getting something before we pass the budget? And again, I realize we can't hold those numbers. It's no different than we had gotten one five years ago, we wouldn't have projected COVID. So I mean, I, I get that, but I'm.
It's not in there, Councilwoman. We had, we had played around with a three-year budget to try and, but a lot of it was really guesswork. I don't want to, I don't want to provide something that's guesswork when we really don't know. Maybe by May, we'll have an idea, you know, if, if, if the vaccinations are out and we're seeing people starting to come back. But even today, we're hearing that the numbers are rising in Michigan, and so a lot of it is really guesswork. I mean, we've got, we're not allocating all the dollars, as Rob mentioned, the slow burn. We're not allocating all the dollars from the federal government. We are proposing holding a significant amount back. And what Rob didn't mention is even we can't allocate them all because for the, the 51 million or whatever the number turns out to be, they'll only, they'll only provide us dollars based on losses. So even when you talk about OPEB and things like that, OPEB went up. We didn't have a loss. So we're only allowed to use the dollars for actual losses. So we lost in the parking system. We lost with LEPCO. We lost with income tax. We lost with fines and fees. And Jake has gone through and kind of tallied all of the loss. So we'll have some of that left over, and we know what we'll have, and we can share that with you, certainly. But I think a lot of the, the income taxes guesswork because we don't know where COVID is going to stand. So if it, if it makes sense to do a, you know, even a three-year projection by the time you're passing the budget because things have stabilized one way or the other, then I think that's, that's doable. But as things continue to, to change week to week, it's, it's very challenging. I really didn't want to put together a complete and wild guess. We wanted to, you know, to, we wanted to have an idea of where the numbers stood. So we will continue to look at that over the next, you know, month or two. We just, you know, want to give an unrealistic number, but we can tell you the numbers that we, that we'll have in terms of the federal dollars.
And then my last question, I promise, has to do with the Teamsters. The Teamsters were the only bargaining group that settled for a zero contract. And with some of the things that we've seen, we just settled with fire. Are you having any discussions with the Teamsters or any thought about going back and having a discussion with them?
Yes, we would very much like to reward them. They took a 0% for this year with the understanding that our budget was in bad shape, with, with our budget being a little bit better. We are absolutely going to be having conversations with the Teamsters to, to look at how we can reward them for this year, and then we'll have to do another contract moving forward. But in terms of this year with the 0%, we will certainly have conversations with them about how to reward them for, for really agreeing to take a hit, understanding the city's financial, financial situation. So yes.
I appreciate that. I'm sure they will, too. Thank you.
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. What are you all set? Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. The next council member is Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions right now. One is, and I might have missed it, but the American Rescue Plan, that's the federal government one, and I believe it is. And can you tell me how much money it is total? And I, I know you said a few different places it was going to, but also are there any restrictions or stipulations on the spending of that? So how much is it? Where is it going? And are there any restrictions otherwise?
It's approximate, it's estimated to be 51 million by the congressional staffers, but we're waiting for Treasury to confirm that number. It is usable from 2020 through 2024 budgets. So we can use it over basically the four years. It is, there are several restrictions. The restrictions are that it has to be used for decreases in, in, in pots of money from. in, in, in pots of money from, from previous to current. So it's based on two thousand and nineteen. So anything that we compare it to has to be compared to two thousand and nineteen with the allocations were there. It cannot be used for pensions. It cannot be used, it cannot be used for public pensions. It can be used for private multi-corporate pensions. It can, it cannot be used for streets in terms of infrastructure, but it can be used for sewers and one or two other uses, broadband, I think. And that's mostly it. So we got money, all the different cities and townships and villages got money. The counties got money. It was one point nine trillion, and I want to say three hundred and fifty billion of it was for local governments, and the state got money. That's kind of the summary of it. We have a, we have an NLC presentation that we can send to you if you'd like that kind of goes through all of this. As Rob said, it's going to come in two batches, two tranches, they called it, about half within sixty days. And originally, we thought it was half, thirty, within three months. But now Rob is hearing that it's half, the other half will get in a year. So that's mostly it.
Thank you. So I guess just to follow up on that, is it possible to have just like, somebody email me just about that?
We can send you the.
I just want to look at that.
We'll, we'll send you the NLC PowerPoint. Rob, can you be sure to send all of council the NLC PowerPoint?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I've got it.
And then the second.
Good.
I'm sorry. The second question is, can, similarly, can somebody send an email that just kind of outlines the increases to the police budget? Just what the increase is and how much it is and what it's for from last year to this year?
Yep.
Just so I can have it.
I think the only increase we put in was the radio budget, was the radio equipment. But I'm not sure. Well, I mean, there'll be increases for, for healthcare expenses and things like that. They go up, healthcare goes up every year for everybody. But I think the only substantive increase we made was for the, the radio equipment. But Jake and Rob can send you that.
Okay, I mean, I did hear a social worker, a FOIA officer.
Yep, you're right. I'm sorry. Nope, you're right. I was thinking personnel, you're right. The, the social worker.
Whatever it is.
Yep, we can get you that. Thank you. I apologize for that. It was social worker, FOIA officer, radio equipment. You're right, my apologies. So that's why I shouldn't, I should let the budget people do it. Sorry.
If, if someone could just send me an email, I appreciate it, or send it to all of us.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll send it to all of council.
I will note too, for council members, there is a, the, Andy, what's the organization that represents us? MML, the Michigan Municipal League is doing a webinar on the American Rescue Plan Two and, and uses coming up pretty soon. I don't remember when it was, but we just got the email today or, or sometime this weekend, perhaps. If that interests any council members, I think it's a free webinar.
I'll also remind you all that the, the FOIA officer, the FOIA officer and the social worker were both in your, in your budget priorities document that you sent to me. So both of those were things that we were able to do based on the council request.
And I don't, I don't know if Councilmember Jackson's finished, but I did want to thank everyone for the, for the FOIA officer as the person who arbitrates those appeals. I'm very happy to hear that workload is going to be lessened for some of those folks and will be able to do it more efficiently. Councilmember Jackson, were you all set? I, I know you had your hand up still. Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions too. You pointed out about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase to the HRC budget relative to that change in the ordinance allowing for more dollars dedicated specifically to racial justice and equity. Can you remind folks that are listening, paying attention, what the application process is? Because we did just change that. Is there someone here that can speak to that or?
That would be a Kim Coleman question, but I believe we had, I think the applications for that closed in February. They go, they put out a variety of information to groups all throughout the city, starting usually at the end of the year. They have a big budget symposium. It used to be mandatory, now it's highly recommended, but we don't make it mandatory anymore because it's during the day and a lot of the groups are doing their service work. But I know Carol or Kathy, you've both been through this. Do you remember when the deadlines are?
Are those deadlines statutory or policy?
They originally were policy. I know when we sent you the ordinance, we may have, I don't remember if we included, we sent it a while ago. I don't remember if we included specifics or generalities, but we did put something in the recommendations. I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I would just say, maybe before we consider the allocations for how that's spent, that we do some community outreach to find out how people want it spent. I'm not saying what particular organizations we would fund, but to find out what activities are most needed so that we're prepared when the applications come in to make sure that we're addressing needs identified for the community.
And I'll, I'll point out that work, a lot of that work happened. The HRCS board does that specifically, and they put together a five or six-point or a fairly comprehensive list of, of needs. And then when people apply, they, they tell you where they are within those needs, that needs, that needs list. So they've done a lot of that work. They do that at the end of the year in anticipation for applications to be coming in, I believe in January, maybe potentially February is the deadline. So a lot of that is done in advance. And they'll be done again when you pass this budget. Again, that work will happen with our staff and our HRCS folks. And it sounds like Councilwoman Wood is agreeing with me that it's February deadline. So that will happen throughout the, throughout the year in anticipation of the next application process with these dollars that we put in. So that will be coming. And I think having Kim Coleman in or Katrina or Tony to discuss that process would be probably give you many more specifics.
Mr. Mayor, I would make one request. If, if legally possible, to see if we might be able to open the window a little bit to allow folks to apply for the newly allocated funds. Certainly, I'm, if I'm mistaken and forgot that we did put a tight timeline in the ordinance, that's, that's a different set of circumstances. But if there is some flexibility, I would encourage it particularly on the new hundred and thirty-five thousand.
All right, Mark, you're watching. Will you please talk to Kim Coleman and, and talk to her about that and see if that's possible to open it up for? I mean, it's, it would be specifically equity. This would be equity usage funding. So Mark, you're, you're on. If you'll talk to Kim about that and then get back with council. Thank you, that would be great.
That'd be great, thank you. Councilmember Dunbar, did you have anything to add? Your hand's still up. Okay, Councilmember Dunbar?
I do, especially if we're going to open it up. I thought at one point I heard you say, Mr. Mayor, that it was for the calendar year of twenty-two, that the equity funding had been. So I wanted to make sure, one, that it was for the fiscal year starting now in July. And because of that, and especially if we're going to open it up for funding opportunities, because the window for participation from community members in the February roundtables, which determines or informs the priorities, I would suggest that we have another round of community engagement because I don't know that the HRCS board sitting right now would be prepared. And, and, and I don't think they should speak on behalf of the community looking for these funds.
We'll have to navigate this because we're in essence at the, this is, it's a July one, the money starts coming in July one as part of the, the new budget. But you passed the ordinance in March. So we'll have to navigate the intricacies there. When I said calendar year, I was talking about advanced piece. Advanced piece starts with the two thousand and twenty-two calendar year because that's when the county's budget starts. So that was not what I referenced with the calendar year. With this budget, it starts July one. And, but we're going to have to navigate, we're going to have to navigate that process because again, we passed a new ordinance in the middle of the, well, I'd say at the, at the, about the three-quarter point for the year. So we've got three months left in this fiscal year, and then we've got next year, and we've got the process. I don't know, I'd have to, we have to talk to Kim Coleman and see what their process is, and if it's that something that staff can, can actually get done.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wood?
Just to add some clarity to this, on January twenty-seventh was the HRCS roundtable that invited all the, a number of different community groups to come and present, which was done in a Zoom forum. And then February tenth was when all applications were due back to HRCS. It's my understanding, you know, that that goes through a review process with Kim, the board, and then is passed on to the mayor. And then we received from council's perspective the list that they recommend to us at the budget time. So whether, again, some of those groups were invited or not, you'd have to get the list from, from Kim that, that's there. And it's been my experience that there are a multitude of groups that are involved in this, and not all of them get funding. So the fact that there's additional funding, they might be able to utilize and, and get some of the needs that are, that the community believes are out there.
Agreed.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Looks like that exhausts our questions. I'm sure we'll have many, many more once we get to line items and through the next couple of months of budgeting process. But thank you for presenting this. Thank you for recognizing some of the priorities that we put in. Yes?
I, Kim Coleman texted me and said she's on the call, and she said, yes, we will reach out to the community with hopes of dispersing funds for the upcoming year, so they will do, they will do some reach out.
Great.
She's on top of it. She's, hi, Kim.
Hi, Kim. All right, that's great. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Whitigan, Mr. Brower, for your time tonight. We're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. Comments by council members. Is there anyone? I've got some things to say, but I'll, y'all go first. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you. I just want to announce that tomorrow, first of all, I want to back up. I want to salute the Ingham County Health Department and the, the COVID vaccination rollout. I got my first shot last week on the fourteenth, I think, at the Pavilion. And I, I'm going to tell you, that, that thing was seamless. They had, they had Michigan State Police, they had National Guard, they had, you know, Lansing paramedics, and they got you in and got you out. It was very seamless. And so I want to throw a shout out to the Ingham County Health Department and a thank you for that. What they've done is they have, in order to try to reach the critical populations, they've done a number of pop-up clinics. And the last one is tomorrow, March twenty-third. There's a, there's a COVID vaccination pop-up location at the Union Missionary Baptist Church. It's my understanding that there is approximately a hundred more opportunities for vaccinations for folks who are sixty and above or fifty and above with certain medical conditions who live in Ingham County and in particular zip codes, which are four eight nine one oh, four eight nine ten, four eight nine one twelve, four eight nine three three, four eight nine zero six, four eight nine one five, or Lansing Township, four eight nine one seven. And so that, that's another opportunity for folks who may not have transportation to go out to the Pavilion to avail themselves of a COVID vaccination. If you want to schedule an appointment, please contact Mindy Smith at five one seven, two four three, five one three four. And again, hats off to the Ingham County Health Department for, just for a seamless experience at the MSG Pavilion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmembers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to make a regular announcement for anybody that wants to subscribe to the Fourth Order newsletter. It's just a way to communicate with some council updates, some feedback. I've had a few people, well, many people reply back with their comments, and I would like to share the updates with you. So if you would like to have them, please email me at bryant.jackson@lansingmi.gov, and I'll be sure to add you to the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatifor. I very rarely talk about my other job, but today I wanted to announce we have three volunteers. One is a foster grandparent and two are senior companions. All three of them are ninety-five years old and volunteering. And I just wanted to put a shout out to Dorothy Rush, who is a foster grandparent, Helen Simons, who is a senior companion, which means she goes into senior living facilities, nursing home facilities, and works with the, those patients that are there. And Fran Woodring, who is another one that goes in to senior facilities. Now, of course, all three of these young ladies have not been able to serve lately, but all of them are very anxious to get back to serving and have served our community for a number of years. But to have all three of them turning ninety-five and all three of them anxious to be out there, back out, giving their time and talents to others is just fantastic. So I wanted to recognize these three, their birthdays, and let everyone know how much we appreciate them.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I, I just got permission to be able to speak about this tonight. I, I, I wanted to address this, and, and Mr. Mayor, this is to you and, and also to Chief Green. There was, there were a couple of different incidences that I became aware of through Facebook that happened recently. And one of them was a, a chase that happened with a suspected gunman in South Lansing, where the officer drove through residential backyards trying to, to get, to do whatever. Nobody knew, the residents didn't know at the time what was going on. A gentleman posted a picture of this police car outside of his back window, and he said his daughters came to him and said, Daddy, there's the police out here. And he tried to make communication with the police officer. The officer had driven across several backyards to get to his, where he sat for a while. And then he backed up and went between houses and out to a main road across the front yard. And he said that basically, when he tried to communicate with the officer, even out on the front porch, the guy looked at him and then, and just took off and never came back. And, and he was, this guy was generous in, in, in how he reported this on Facebook. He said, I understand there might have been, you know, an emergency situation, but also if there is an emergency situation, and as it turned out, it was a suspected shooter, if there was engaged gunfire, the backdrop to the police car was this family's home. So, and I'm not trying to make this a big public thing. I just, I, I, I need there to be some accountability here. And I'm not going to name the officers, but I did, I did email Chief Green, and I shared with him the concerns. And I got a nice email back that said he would send an officer out there to take the complaint. What I got from the gentleman, what I heard from the gentleman after the officer had been there was that he didn't write anything down. He verbally, he heard the complaint. He explained that it was a young officer, and he had made a bad decision. But he also said that it would be handled internally. And that his complaint was not actually taken. And this, it concerns me on a couple of different levels because, one, we can't have accountability to know how it's going to be handled if there isn't a complaint to track. I'm not trying to get that young officer in trouble. I want him to have better training in this. I imagine it was a very scary situation for him to be in, in, in a situation where there was a suspected shooter on the run, and they thought it was somewhere in this vicinity. I'm not sure, I, I'm sure it was not the right decision to drive across these residential backyards where kids play and to cut between houses and to never go back and discuss this situation with the families who obviously saw him. So the lieutenant went to the house and, and listened to the concerns and said that it would be addressed internally. And, and again, I, I, I would like some way to follow up on what is discussed in this and how, I, I think when you handle things internally, when there is a matter of public trust involved, we're not following up with the public to let them know that it's been handled in, in a way that they can have confidence it won't happen again. And so for me, I would like to maybe look at how, when these situations happen, and it's not a public shaming thing, but that a complaint was made and that this is how it was addressed in the same way that we do like City Connect. And we say, there's a pothole here, and there's a checkup on it so that somehow the public knows that, that this has been addressed. And that if other people see it happening in the future, they'll know, hey, we, we've addressed this once. So now it's not a matter of not knowing, it's now people not following procedure, and they should know the procedure. And I've asked the chief, how would you have handled this situation differently? And, and what will you tell that officer would have been a better way to handle it? And so I'm waiting to hear that reply. And I appreciate the dialogue that we're having, but I also think it's a bigger conversation to have with the community involved in this situation, because it was so prominent on Facebook, and there were so many concerns raised. Another one of the concerns raised, which I've also shared with the chief, in the engagement where the officer came to speak with the gentleman about what had happened, there were several times in the conversation where he kept putting his hand on his gun. And, and, and actually, we used the term, there's this, he said, when you train somebody in a paramilitary way, you respond in a paramilitary way. And I'm, you know, we can all use different words for, for that, but when there's a, there's a fearful response and, and this, this sort of habitual reaching for the gun, which honestly scared the daughters, they didn't want to open the door when they saw it was the police officer standing there with his hand on his gun. And, and the father noted several times. And so that, to me, is, that's a general rapport thing, like, we should be maybe working on how to have these difficult conversations without using body language that is subliminally threatening. I'm sure that he didn't actively think about the fact that he was putting his hand on his gun, but it, it happened, and, and it had an effect. And the final thing I'm mentioning is another incident, which I have yet to be able to talk to Chief Green about, which is another thing that, you know, when these things happen, if we don't address them, and they're all over the social media world, everybody's got the opportunity to make their own, sort of, you know, fill in the gaps with, with their own thought process. There was a woman involved in an accident, and, and when she got out of her car and was waiting for the police to arrive, she accused, she, she, she saw the man who had been involved in the accident with her get out and start acting aggressively toward her, so she became, she began filming him. And there is an allegation of an assault that occurred, where this man hit the phone out of her hand, and it hit her in the face. And she tried to address the assault portion of this unsuccessfully several times, and finally, an officer went to her house to address this. And while he was at the door, he did what I never want to see a police officer do, which is make excuses that this man might have been having a bad day. Did he really, did she really want to, to put this on his record? He had a baby in the car? No, no. When this woman is five foot two and the guy assaulting her is like over six foot four, this, this woman deserved to have her complaint taken seriously and to have it dismissed, and the guy didn't take her, he didn't, and, and she's trying to get her, her stuff back. She said she provided a bunch of evidence, including the videotape, for them to file this complaint against this gentleman, gentleman that was involved in the accident. And the case was closed, because that officer that went to her door never turned any of that stuff in. Now, I know that there's two sides to every story, and I'm waiting very patiently to hear the rest of this, but both of those incidences just reinforce to me the need that we have to really work on how our officers interact with empathy, understanding, and compassion when they're dealing with the community and not make excuses for bad behavior.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Spitzley has her response, I believe.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, it's, Kathy, I'm glad you brought that up. My mother called me, and it was her backyard where they started the chase. And when she called me and she said, there's a police officer, you know, driving through my backyard, I, I really thought she was playing around. I, I actually didn't believe her at first. And so, you know, she's been talking to her neighbors as well. So that was, you know, I, he had to hop a curb to get into their backyard. He must have came up Moffett, and then my parents own the vacant piece of property by the woods, so he had to hop that curb to drive through there and drive through the neighbors, the backyards. I did immediately reach out to Chief Green and ask him, you know, basically what the heck was going on. And, 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 you know, my mother had a different experience from the officers who, who came to her house, but I think that the concern is still valid about, I, I just find that shocking. And, but there was a complaint taken, so I'm, 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 I apologize that a complaint wasn't taken, and maybe, you know, that he didn't take a complaint from the, the gentleman that you're speaking about, Kathy, because he had already taken one from somewhere else, because I know that they were going down the street, but that, that was, that was pretty surprising. I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't realize that that was, that was a thing, that you could drive in people's private property like that.
I don't believe it is a thing. So I just want to, I didn't think it should have been a thing.
Thank you, councilmembers. I will leave that to the mayor to respond if he wants to during mayor's comments. So the thing I just want to add is not that thing, it's a different thing about virtual meetings. We talked in the committee of the whole a long time ago, around five o'clock, no, five-thirty, excuse me, that we were, the, the plan forward is going to be starting April twelfth, some, and just reiterate for the council, but I think there's a different audience tonight than, than was at Cow. April twelfth, we will allow for participation of councilmembers and the public, both in-person and virtually, with very limited ability to allow people into chambers. I did mention that we talked to City TV and others about possibly moving out to the South Washington office complex, but because of the, that room is not set up to broadcast on a regular basis, so it would require several staff members and lots of equipment that we might not have or have to bring in and tear down and set up every time, because that, that room is used for other things, that the chambers makes the most sense for right now. We'll have to look at, we had my OSHA in to do some help with, with distancing and spacing, and then we will have an overflow for twenty-five people with televisions in the council, City Hall lobby. And then we'll have, we're going to work on logistics. Sherry's already emailed me scheduling a time to go do a, a practice run with City TV and others, and then we will, we'll do that, but we still have the hybrid option. So councilmembers that are participating remotely will still participate remotely, and public that want to call in rather than come downtown will certainly be willing to do that, or be, be able to do that, excuse me. So that's the plan, starting April twelfth. We did talk about committee meetings as well, because the governor's, or my OSHA orders about workplace rules still have not yet been lifted to allow for City Hall to open completely. We are not going to plan that yet, because while we can open City Hall for a full City Council meeting, it becomes more cumbersome to do it for, on a one-off for committees. So we're going to just, we're going to stick to virtual committee meetings for right now, and then hybrid Cow and Council. We have double-checked our X's and, and crossed our Ts and dotted our Is with the Attorney's Office to make sure we're in compliance with the laws. And again, just reiterating that no council member should feel compelled or mandated to be in person if they don't want to be downtown. We will, we'll, we'll work as best we can to make this a good experience for those at home and those in the room, and those traveling wherever. So we will, we'll get that done. So thank you for that indulgence. I think that's it. We're going to move on to the city clerk.
Thank you, President Spadefor, a couple of announcements that I do want to make. Reminder for those folks who live in the whole Dwyer Valley School Districts, you do have a special election coming up in May. You should have gotten an absentee ballot application at home in the mail. And for those who have already requested your ballot, we will be mailing those later this week, so watch out for that ballot. And again, the election day is May fourth. If you recall, we opened quite a number of drop boxes last year. Because of the small number of people involved in this election, we are limiting which ones we have open to the ones that are at our main locations, as well as the ones that are nearest the folks who live in those school districts within the city of Lansing. I also want to tack on to what Councilmember Spitzley said about the COVID nineteen vaccination clinic over at the MSU Pavilion. I've actually spent a number of afternoons volunteering at that clinic to help get the vaccinations administered. I'm one of the people that watches the cars and monitors the folks for fifteen minutes. It is a great, great experience. But, you know, one of the things that did concern me as I was volunteering there was that it did not seem as racially diverse as our community, the cars that I saw coming through the line. And so I'm, I'm glad that the Health Department is, is working to expand access to more, more accessible locations. And then finally, I, Councilmember Wood mentioned volunteers. We also use some volunteers at my office, and in fact, a couple of them, we were featured on the Good Neighbors segment on Fox forty-seven. So I want to, just a couple of the many volunteers that we have were, were featured. So Judith Lense and Cheryl Thunderbunk Stevens were, were both featured, so I encourage you to go and look at that. We did put a link to the, to the video on our Facebook page. But, you know, we have people who volunteer for us, and they treat us as a social gathering, and they've been doing, many of them have been doing it for many years, and we really appreciate all of the work that they, that they provide to us. And with that, we are to community event announcements. So I see a couple of people have their hands up. At this point, we are only doing hands up for community event announcements, so if that's not what you want, please take your hand down. We will give you about a minute to tell us the details, time, place, and purpose of your events. We'll give you about a minute, and it looks like we have the advocates followed by Alicia Kelly and then Erica Lynn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now, yeah.
Very much. First of all, I want to state that the advocates, along with the Villas Lansing Black Lives Matter Lansing and Mikey Twenty-three Foundation, has been doing two-a-twenty-one, where we are getting all newly-aged twenty-one-year-olds that turn twenty-one in the year two thousand twenty-one licensed with their CPL, so they can no longer have to get pulled over for carrying legal weapons and not be, and, and go to jail for CCW. So we're trying to stall that prison, or, excuse me, school-to-prison pipeline by education and licensing them. So that's that. Secondly, Saturday, April tenth at two PM, we're having a community conversation with candidates on safety and policing, and given the outrage from our council member-at-large, Kathy Dunbar, and at-large Patricia Spitzley on the police car driving in the backyard, we'd love to have you all who are up for election this year come to that conversation so that we can have conversation around the actual outraged issues of police brutality and people dying in jails and so on and so forth, because those are the things we should be really upset about and talking on council. So outside of that, Saturday, April tenth at two PM, Black Lives Matter Lansing is inviting all candidates to that community conversation. It will be a conversation, again, with the community, not a, a group of people we put together, but real, actual people that will have concerns and comments and have questions for you all, and, and have a conversation surrounding safety and policing. So that's it for me. Again, if anybody wants to sign up, they're youngster, for the CPL class, it's at the-advocates.net. If they wanted to donate to this program, you can go to thevillagelansing.org to give, it does cost about two hundred dollars per student to get them fully licensed. And if anybody has any questions about why we're doing this or why this is important, please feel free to reach out to myself or Erica to give you more information on this, but it's definitely needed. People don't use firearms illegally when they're legal to own them and understand the safety and surrounding about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alicia Kelly and then Erica Lynn. Alicia, you can unmute yourself. Give a...
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my hand was initially up for the rezoning, so I will go ahead and...
Just put it back up in about one minute.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right. Erica?
Thank you. The Village Lansing will be holding our second annual Lansing School District Open House Celebration. That is to celebrate the hard work of the class of two thousand twenty-one graduates from Lansing Everett, Sexton, and Eastern. The tentative date is June sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The time and location is to be determined, and that date is tentative. We are aiming to coincide with the drive-through commencement ceremony like we did last year. That way, we can stagger the three schools out. If you would like to donate to the efforts, please visit thevillagelansing.org or visit us on Facebook. If you would like to be a sponsor or support in any other way, there are a lot of different ways. We want to make this a celebration. If you were able to attend last year, we had snacks, food, entertainment. We did a youth march for justice. That was sponsored by The Fledge, so different ways that you can sponsor, different ways that you can support. If you're interested in something like that, you can reach us at thevillagelansing@gmail, or you can call us at five-one-seven-four-eight-three-two-two-three-three. But we are holding that second annual Open House Celebration for the Lansing School District grads, so please, we want to make this a great one. If you can support in any way, give us a call, shoot us an email. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. So now you, if you want to speak on legislative matters, please begin raising your hand. Raise hand on the, press Alt-Y on a Windows computer, or Option-Y on an Apple, or Star nine on a phone. So we will continue to recognize the raised hands. So you'll have through the mayor's comments, as well as through at least the very first speaker, but we will cut it off after the first speaker, shortly after that. So please begin raising your hands, and the items eligible for discussion under public comment, we don't have any public carries, but we have ordinances for passage, the items on the consent agenda, the resolutions for action, and the ordinances for introduction, of which I think we have the most I've ever seen in civil meeting to be introduced. But please raise your hand, and with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I will add my voice to those who would like to congratulate the Ingham County Health Department. I was able to volunteer at the vaccination clinic at Dwight Rich here in Lansing. It was a great experience, helping people to make sure the forms got filled out right, to make sure their cards were right, kind of watching them as, as, as they waited. There was a, I haven't, I haven't been to the one at the Pavilion since they first opened. There was a good, diverse cross-section of folks at, at Dwight Rich, so that's good news. And again, that's right in the heart of four-eight-nine-one-oh, four-eight-nine-one-one, which are, are, are Lansing's two highest COVID populations. So kudos to the school district and the Health Department for partnering. Kudos to our emergency management staff here in Lansing for helping to set that up and insisting that we need to do something here in Lansing. Really a great effort between the three entities, and it's, if anyone who's vaccinated, volunteer there, it really was incredible. I want to remind everybody who's watching, Lansing has pushed back, we have, I have pushed back our income tax deadline to June first. The federal government pushed it back to mid-May, so we are always about fifteen days behind the federal government. So if you, if you haven't filed your income taxes, you have until June first. If you're ready with them, file them now, please. We want to get all the collections in, and we want to make sure refunds are provided in a timely manner as, as necessary, but the income tax deadline has been pushed back to June first. For those interested in, in helping out the city, March twenty-seventh, there'll be a cleanup in the Baker neighborhood. So that should be a, a great event to, to clean up. We're hearing a lot of, of folks around the city who are concerned about roads and highways that, that have trash, and, and our Neighborhood's Department will provide, you know, resources, bags and things like that for cleanups. I know Councilman Hussein does one on Edgewood every year, and we've got a variety of others who, who want to do that, so we're providing those resources, but there'll be a March twenty-seventh, one at Baker, I believe, with Coggle. There'll be a golf at the stadium event on April seventh at four-thirty. I am not a golfer, but I hear it's going to be a lot of fun. It's actual golf at the stadium, so for you golfers, get a tee time, I guess. We released our LEDC Annual Report, incredible work going on with our economic development arm, one and a half billion dollars in investment in Lansing just, just last year, ongoing and completed, and, and I hope you'll take a look at that report. I know we sent that to council, so it was probably going to be referred to be put on file, but I hope you all take a look. To be put on file, but I hope you all take a look. Yard waste. April nineteenth, our pickup starts. I know it's beautiful out and I know people are putting stuff in yards, yard waste bags already. Please don't put them to the curb yet. Please, if you, if you have yard waste bags and you want to drop them off. You can drop them off at our six oh one East South Street, our operations and maintenance building. Every Saturday, you can drop them off until April nineteenth. There's only, there's a ten bag limit. But you can drop them off every Saturday till April nineteenth. And on April nineteenth, we start picking up again. This year, we're expecting to have our seasonals on and our staffing. So we don't expect there to be a delay like there was last year. I'm still apologizing for that, but please, everybody remember as it's, you know, seventy degrees today. Please remember that we don't start picking up till April nineteenth. And if you have to get it dropped off, it's six oh one East South Street. It's the City of Lansing Operations and Maintenance Building on Saturdays. And then finally, our arts grants were issued for last year, our second round of arts grants. So congratulations to the Capital City Film Festival, Lansing Symphony Orchestra, the Michigan Institute for Contemporary Arts, which we lovingly call MICA. Pasadena Community Center in Peppermint Creek, all of who received. Arts grants from the City of Lansing, doing incredible work, keeping our city vibrant. Making sure that, that we are an exciting and fun place, showing pride in our city. All these are very important entities and it's being, and we're helping to make their work possible through our arts grants. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I forgot. I'm sorry. I forgot to mention Councilman Dunbar's. Issues. Honestly, it's the first I'm hearing of it. So I invite anyone to please send that stuff my way, but I was not aware of. Either the car in the backyard or the other incident, but I wrote them both down. And I will have conversations with the chief tomorrow. I know a lot of that is provided to internal affairs for investigation, but if you're saying that they weren't or there were some reason. You know, especially an officer saying, you know, trying to discourage someone. From filing a report, we have, we have cited. We have cited people for, for things like that in the past. We want to make sure that everyone has the ability to provide reports. So. I'll talk to the chief about that, but please send those to me. You can call me, you can email me, and I'll, I'll take those up with the chief. But I know he is. Very interested in ensuring accountability and ensuring that people can, can make complaints and have them investigated and, and. You know, and we, we take action. So I will certainly talk to the chief about that. For Councilman Dunbar and Spitzley. I did not realize your mother was involved. I'm sorry to hear that, but. We'll make sure that, I'll make sure that I talk to the chief about that and that all of these are taken very seriously. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I, I really would like to, thank you for saying that, Mayor, but I really would like to look at possibly some type of a system where we can. We can share with the public how these are addressed as opposed to just internally. And I'm not saying that officer names have to be attached to them, but in the same way. Folks can track a complaint on City Connect. I would like them to be able to, to, to track a complaint in, in the.
I know we do, we do have our, our, our PD app. Which is very similar to Lansing Connect, except it's, it's for police. But I'll, I, I, I hear you. And I, I think that, I think you can track a lot of that, but let's find out. We've got a police transparency page, so. Let me, let me do some work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Scott.
Okay, thank you. So we are to public comment on legislative matters. And again, that is limited to the items that council will be acting on tonight. Ordinances for passage, consent agenda, resolutions for action. And ordinances for introduction and the first speaker, and we will be. Stopping the sign up after the first speaker. Again, Alt-Y on Windows, Option-Y on Apple. Raise your hand icon if you have it somewhere or Star nine on a cool fashioned phone. The first speaker is Loretta Stanway, followed by Zach Wee.
Hello again. Briefly and somewhat quickly, I suppose, I do support the special in use for. The Sparrow addresses for St. Casimir to become reef, reef. Refurbished and refocused their efforts and what they handle. I think that's all a very good project and I hundred percent support it. Excuse me, on the advance peace thing. I think that on the whole, that is something I would like to support, but I don't feel like I've had enough opportunity. And I don't know that the public as a whole has had enough opportunity. To hear enough about it and have time to look into it enough to come up with questions and. And any concerns there might be specifically about. Tracking their success and whether or not they've had the success that they. Present having had and how it's financed. I wish there was more time to dig into that before you folks were going to vote on it. It might very well be something I would end up supporting, but at this point, I just don't know. And then on the list of different ordinances to be rescinded. I'll say on the one hand, I think this is a good effort because at least you're not just. Having an ordinance on the book that you're not enforcing. But on the other hand, there are several of these that I would not like to see off of the books. I would not like to see. Any of them off of the books with the exception of number ten, which I think it's just really difficult to prove. How someone is annoying to another person. In particular, I wouldn't want to see the. Play in the streets removed because I know how many people already walk in the streets and roller blade in the streets and. And play basketball in the streets. And I think that's just looking for an accident to happen. Also, I particularly wouldn't want to see the. Loaning money to students. Removed because I think that was initially established to prevent. Students from extorting one another. And I think that that could be a problem again if that were removed. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next is Zach Weeley, followed by the advocates.
Thanks, Mr. Swob. Loretta Lynn, to respond to your comments on that, just I, I think the question would come into play as to whether we feel that the most effective way to respond to people who are playing in the streets. Or loaning petty cash between each other at an elementary school is to find them through their criminal penal system. I don't think that's probably the best way to handle those situations. So maybe just consider that from a different lens than you currently are. I look forward to the accountability on the police officers involved in the incidents this week. This is related to budget in terms of police. When those come through, just make sure that they don't mention like the police chief's phone number. Because that'll definitely get you fired. So. Um, Councilperson Jackson. You mentioned wanting to know a little bit more about the increases in LPD funding for next year. And I've had the budget for a couple of hours, so I was able to figure most of that out. There was the JAG grant which went to. IT and upgraded cameras, which is about two hundred and fifty K. And then the other one million was to increase the budget for active personnel. And I know we have the increase in budget due to the. Social worker along with the additional FOIA person. If we're paying them both half a million dollars, then like, let me know when those job. Posts hop up because that seems pretty, like a sweet gig. I mean, social marketers should get paid that much, but. Um. Beyond that, the other stuff was just increases to fix costs for retirement and stuff like that. But. In terms of the so-called budget transparency. There's a complete reworking of the way that the budget was published. This year versus years prior where there is an inclusion of a. Sub category that never previously existed called Internal Service and Fund Expanse, Expenses. Funds were real allocated through this to try to lump a bunch of like other things that were previously between different departments. And while we can call that budget transparency, I think. It would be naive to think that that had nothing to do with the fact that previously people were able to campaign against police funding by talking about how a third of the. City's budget went towards police. And now if you look at it, it's like, oh no, it's like eleven percent. It's nothing. I mean, it's on that beautiful pie chart that everybody's going to look at. We only put eleven percent or. Sorry, seventeen percent of the police department. The thing is, is if you actually scroll down to page like fifty-eight. And you look at the total fifty million dollar budget and you divide that by the actual total city budget, it actually comes out to thirty-three point one six percent. Which is actually about a three hundred basis point increase over last year. So despite everybody's called a decreased funding for the police. We increased funding for the police. We buried it in a hundred and twenty-seven page long document, a hundred and thirty-four page long document to make it look like we didn't increase the funding for the police. And then we threw like four hundred thousand dollars at HRCS, which was, which is great. So. Before we start claiming credit for defunding or reallocating those funds, I just want to make sure that we named that, that, that didn't, okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Mike Lynn, again, I have some of the very similar concerns. Can you all hear me? Good, okay. So the things that Brian T. Jackson, Councilman Jackson brought forward, I appreciate again, Loretta and concerns of. Kids are going to start extorting money again because this is off the books. It's just. It's just that paranoia. We got to work on that. Um, kids playing in the streets, you know, you want kids to stop shooting and stop beating up people and fighting. And this is what we constantly do is take away from kids, right? Can't even play in the streets anymore. Guys, we got to think outside our little white boxes. Alright? Secondly, this budget. Um, I think Zach touched on most of it very good. I think that. One thing that I keep hearing that I'm very concerned with is this racial equity and justice. And the fact that the mayor just stated that, that this, this alliance that he put together of hodgepodge people that are. Just no more qualified than the fact that they're elitist in some form or fashion or work some. Job that he feels very comfortable stating in a, in a public nature. What, I, I thought, I could have sworn I heard you say there was some, a massive amount of money that they're going to decide. Where it goes when my racial justice equity firm tells me or people tell me where this is going to go, we're going to decide where this goes. I just don't understand, like, what's the qualifications? And how is this not coming through committee or through? The council and council, why are y'all allowing it? Secondly. I'm tired of hearing the word justice. Who are you giving justice to? Where is the justice going to? The only people who have been harmed can't talk and you won't speak to us. You're not trying to do anything for that other than fight the things in court. I'm not, I'm, I'm just confused as where the justice is going out to. There is no justice that's been had. There's no racial equity. I'm glad you learned that, that word too. Again, equity, because on the BLM call, I actually didn't know what it meant. So that's a good word for you. We usually, people usually learn words like that in kindergarten, maybe third grade. Outside of that, this, this, this budget, again, like Zach said, you're hiding the police budget. All of the transparency that you guys speak on, every time you try to sell us on something. I have to, it's like, almost like exactly the opposite of what you're trying to sell us on. The transparency of it all. And secondly, this fifty million dollars has been talked to, talked about a lot. I know that this administration believes that we all black people don't speak to each other. But I know of at least three pastors who have been contacted in the last week. And told the money's in, can we have that conversation now? Andy, that's illegal. You can't do that in an election year. You cannot use this money given to you by, by the federal government to buy votes or buy people's silence. It's illegal. And Chris Swob, I'd like you to look into that. FOIA his phone. Isn't your phone a, a public record? FOIA his phone and find out the people that's calling or your campaign manager and who they're calling. These things are illegal. So that budget, we definitely need to be contact or find, figuring out and paying attention. And thank you, Brian T. Jackson, for asking that question. He wants to break down where it's going, how it's allocated and so on. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next, I've got Doug Ruble, followed by Mike Redding.
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to speak to the mayor's budget tonight. My name is Doug Ruble, Finance Director of thirty-one years for the City of Lansing, which I'm very proud. I really didn't hear a lot today with the details. I, and I've been a part of the budget for thirty-one years or was. And I know how you all try to. Please current your activities, which really is what you're supposed to be doing to a certain extent. So I have no problem with that. The mayor did address legacy costs to an extent. But what is not addressed in this budget, I don't know if this is. A sand wedge or a driver. Are we falling behind? Are we getting ahead? Do we have an actuarial evaluation? Do we know what we should be contributing to healthcare? I really think we should look hard at this. And I know if we're getting extra federal money. It's a shell game. And you know, you can talk to your finance director or your budget director. You can't put it toward retirement. Legacy costs, but you could put it toward roads and take roads money and put it toward. Healthcare. I mean, there's a lot of ways to solve this issue. I, I just don't want us to forget. That the easiest thing going forward is to reduce your long-term liability. And do what you got to do to get current things done. I agree with that. And if, if the mayor is putting money toward the legacy cost, are we getting ahead or are we getting behind? I don't know. He didn't say. I'm not criticizing. But we really need to focus on that. And I just don't want to lose track of that because budget hearings in the most part get sidetracked between a hundred thousand dollar items and fifty thousand dollar items. When we're talking hundreds of million dollar items. So please take that into consideration. Please look at that when you proceed to this year's budget items. And. I, you know, when, when you, when you look at it, we don't even have an actuarial evaluation of, on which we should be putting into healthcare. That would be a great start. So that we're really new. I'm not faulting the mayor on this one. Don't get me wrong. I haven't agreed with you in the past, but you know, we're in a situation where how much should we be putting in? And he may be putting a lot more in, but. Those are the things that are going to drag us down in the future. I just don't want us to forget. We need to do this because you've done some great labor negotiations. So your legacy costs are going to go down in the future. And it's the seventy-five plus year olds that are dragging you down. I understand that. We just need to help that and resolve that, make it part of, part of the budget process. God bless you, Carol Woods, for being with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Reading. Followed by Erica Lynn.
Good evening. I'll make this quick. I'm calling in response to the thirty-five thirty-four, thirty-five thirty-eight West Jolly. Idea of rezoning this so they can add another nine-unit apartment in the back. I speak it as myself and also as the president of Churchill Downs. I sent you guys a letter with some photos. I'm going to kind of touch on that stuff so you understand. The property itself, the piece of property that's on the east side of those two. Built up their parking lot when they built it in. It is five feet above the, the adjacent property. So the water that is there has nowhere to go except in the neighbors' backyards. A perfect example is if you looked at those pictures, you'll see a, a spot in the fence. Where the shed you can see through it. And that, all that underneath that fence is where the water's rolling and it's created its own path. We know water goes least resistance. It happens to be least resistance. Into these neighbors' backyards. Okay, so when it rains, their backyard is unusable. And we're not talking about just the day after. We're talking about weeks after because the water is nowhere to go. The drain doesn't work there because it's elevated a little bit higher than the backyards because the houses in this neighborhood. They have one drain for three houses on each side. And it appears that there may be more draining into the one that's in the back of Marsh's yard. Also, you'll notice in the pictures that this area that they have. Not done anything with has become a hangout for trash. The trees have been cut down and then logged up and not anything done with them. It's all overgrown. And they're using it for a place to dump trash. It just looks nasty. And I am hoping that you guys will not allow this to be rezoned. Because our neighbors bought those houses not with the idea that they were going to have to deal with. An apartment complex on the other side. They bought it for a place for their family and to hopefully get a little bit of money out of their purchase. You guys put another apartment in there, their value is going to go down because now they have to deal, either deal with or don't deal with. A water problem that is destroying sheds, concrete pads. And one neighbor said they're getting leakage into their house because there's so much water in the backyard. So unless these people that are putting in this apartment complex want to spend a million dollars to put a. An efficient drain in. I'm not, I hope you don't vote for this. Okay? Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Next, it's Erica Lynn, followed by Rochelle Franklin.
Thank you. I would like to start off just quickly by saying I do support the St. Casimir Church Initiative. I think it is a great idea and I hope it's a wonderful addition to the community. I am also in support of all of the. Repeals of the ordinances that were originally brought by Councilmember Jackson. I think it's a step in the right direction of decriminalizing. Being black, brown and/or poor. So that's a great start there. I also am in support of the Advance Peace Initiative at its core. The program itself is a wonderful one, but I have to say the. The program itself is a wonderful one, um, but I have to say the concern comes in per usual as how that program is actually implemented. Um, I have some serious questions about what it means for the, you know, it, not necessarily so much as the county. The county does tend to take kind of a hands-off approach to things, but, um, I do have some serious concerns with what the city putting forth money means. What exactly does that mean for this program? The reason that this program at its core is successful is that it does not partnership with police. Okay? It is not something that is led by or anything like that. It is very much separate and not affiliated with the police, and that is why it is successful. It is also community-based and community-led. So the question will be, are you all going to allow that to be truly community-based and contribute, you know, community-led? That would be, you know, my question, my concern. Um, onto the budget. Wow. So that's a tough one because, you know, the saying, the devil's in the details is so true because I agree with Councilmember Wood. I do not understand why the line items come after. That is a tactic that is so counterproductive to transparency. It's inexplicable. And when we're talking about obscene amounts of money that you can just umbrella under racial equity, under your racial equity alliance that you appointed, that are literally aligned to mayor propaganda. Like, how can we not be concerned about that? So excuse me if I'm very concerned about how any allocated to that arena are used, especially if you can't give any details. It literally feels like being on a presentation with a kid in a group project that doesn't really know all of the details and you're just kind of giving us fluff cuz it sounds good. That's what it feels like. And then the federal funds. I honestly expect to see a clearly defined, fair, equitable, very transparent, outlined process to the public on that. How can we have money like that? Millions of millions of dollars. The public should know exactly how those funds are gonna be dispersed, how the public, the community orgs get their hands on those. And we need to know definitively without a doubt that they're being used appropriately, fairly, and equitably. And they're gonna actually move the city forward, not be used in phone calls to say, hey, we've got some money. Can we play ball now? That is unacceptable.
Thank you. Uh, next we've got Rochelle Franklin, Kyle.
Hi, um, this is Rochelle Franklin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, just wanted to speak on the ordinances, um, that, um, are up for repeal. Uh, five of eight of them I oppose. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but my main concern is I have questions. What's the plan to control crime and protect our residents if we repeal these, uh, ordinances? I'm, I'm a proponent of change. I have no problem with change, but I feel it should be changed for the better. The betterment of our residents and not just for a few, but for the majority. So where is this coming from? Um, and I just want to know, how are we going to, what are we going to do to control crime or possible crime? It's, it's been stated that these ordinances are hardly ever enforced anyway, but I'd like to see some movement behind um, safety and, and, and control. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Kyle.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so thank you, uh, thank you, Clerk Swop, cuz I know I may have fallen off the list. I might a little bit of an internet glitch over here. Um, but, uh, I wanted to talk about the ordinances. Uh, I think that, like, I guess the questions that came to mind for me when I was looking at them was who wrote the laws and when? Who do they benefit? And in practice, who will these laws be used against? And I think when you look at this list of ordinances, you know, you've got playing in the street, right? We've got annoying persons. You can't tell me that like, an old, rich, white guy didn't, didn't write that law, right? Who, who, annoying persons? What? Come on. Bikes, bikes in the park. Right? When there's a scheduled event, how am I supposed to know if there's a scheduled event if I'm riding my bike? Right? I'm riding my bike to the park. Oh, now there's a scheduled event, so now I can't ride to the park because I wasn't invited to the scheduled event. Right? Like, it doesn't, these, that doesn't really make any sense. Um, and so I really, I agree with, you know, getting rid of, getting rid of them, cleaning house a little bit. Um, Mayor Shore, your budget presentation, I don't know. It, 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 it did feel like there wasn't a lot of substance because, you know, you came for your budget presentation without your line items. Um, and, and I feel like if we wanted to talk about a budget, it would be really nice to look at the line items when we're having that presentation. Um, and it was, it was just kinda weird because you, like, you were talking about COVID and you were like, you know, I don't wanna, you know, present something that's, you know, just guesswork. I don't wanna present something that's just guesswork. And then you thought, you know, you flashed some flashy pie charts for your budget. Like, did you, are you done? Is it, is like, are, is this a week late? Like, I don't, I gave the COVID's going on and everybody's kind of trying to get through their own time, but like, it's a budget, man. Line items. That Friday is probably a little like, a week too late, in all honesty. So that's all I got for legislative items.
All right. Thank you. That was our last speaker that signed up before we close the sign up. Uh, so we are to, oh, I do wanna acknowledge that we do have a couple letters, uh, in opposition to the rezoning that will be made part of our, uh, permanent record. Um, and that takes us to our rezoning, uh, Z nine of twenty twenty, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan. And for the revision of the district that's adopted by section twelve forty-six point zero two of the code of ordinances, is where the second time by its title, the ordinance was reported from the committee on development and planning, and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Spitsy.
To the President, um, what Chris, what, um, Mr. Swop said, but, um, this was, um, passed unanimously, excuse me, passed unanimously out of the planning, um, commission. Um, we had discussions about it in development and planning, and there were some concerns. Um, I will, I will admit, there are some concerns. It's, um, this rezoning from CUP Community Unit Plan to DM one residential district, the CUP Community Unit Plan is really an obsolete zoning designation. But the plan is to, at some point, um, uh, redevelop um, into, uh, an apartment unit from those, in those two areas. Um, I think there was some concern regarding, um, the condition of the current structures there and the ownership there and, um, you know, basically, are we, are we, um, rewarding bad behavior by, um, approving this, uh, change in zoning? Um, so, you know, we, we brought it forth and, um, had a public hearing on it. Um, but I just wanted everyone to know that there were some concerns. Um, for me personally, I'm just gonna say I, I, I cannot support this, um, this zoning change. Um, but as chair, I do have to bring it forth and, and bring it forth to ordinance for passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitsy. We have a few hands on the subject. First is our vice president, Ms. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to address this. Uh, yeah, so I was also, you know, obviously I'm part of the DNP, uh, committee and we've been at this. Um, and just to add a little bit more, uh, context, uh, with regard to, you know, when we're talking about a rezone, you always have to look at, obviously, surrounding zoning, surrounding land use in the master plan. I mean, you just absolutely have to. Um, and when you look at, um, you know, both to the north, the south, I think also to the west, you have low-density residential. Uh, you do have to the, uh, to the east, you do have, um, the DM one. Uh, and I think that's, you know, the argument, uh, that was made in front of the planning board. Um, but even when you take a look at the master plan, the master plan calls for low-density residential. So as we tran, you know, transition over to form-based code, um, that continues to be, uh, or we continue to call for, uh, in this new code, uh, low-density residential. Um, so when you look at zoning, um, anywhere from probably A to C, probably the A to C designations, um, you know, would make sense in terms of current zoning. Um, anything in the D, um, when you're talking about, um, moderate to higher-end, uh, density, um, is, is inappropriate, in my opinion, for this area. We did talk to our zoning administrator and she admitted that she could have came down on either, uh, side of the fence on this thing. Um, although she did recommend, uh, approval, um, she said that she also could see why, um, this body would, would vote it down. Um, and, and she would not be necessarily uncomfortable, um, with this body voting it down. Um, and then I think you have to take into consideration uh, the, the voices of the Churchill Downs community, uh, that have come out really droves, both through the committee and, uh, you know, the committee process as well as uh, the public hearings, uh, process as well as tonight's process. Um, they have concerns. I think their, uh, concerns are warranted. Um, and I think we should certainly, um, heed the advice of that community. So with that being said, I will also be, um, not supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Hussein. Uh, next up, Councilmember Wood, followed by Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, this particular area has been a problem for a number of years, as, as Councilmember Hussein knows, the number of meetings that we've been to at Churchill Downs and especially when there has been rain and things like that, we frequently hear, um, the issues about the flooding. Um, and I totally agree with Councilmember Hussein on the density issue, uh, that this, uh, particular rezoning, uh, could come into effect and have, uh, a dramatic effect on that neighborhood. So first of all, I, I won't be supporting, uh, this rezone. But what I'd also like is, I'd like, um, to ask that, um, the mayor, working with, um, Andy Kilpatrick and with, uh, the city attorney, look at the drain, um, situation. The reason I say the city attorney with this is there's actually an ordinance on the books that talks about, um, water drainage into other people's property and that, uh, the flow of that. And so there, it, there is an ordinance on the books that prohibits that. Um, so if we could, uh, reach out, you know, rezoning that stops the additional build, but it doesn't take care of the problem, which is the drainage that is affecting this neighborhood. So I think, um, that there has to be a two-pronged approach with this, and I would ask, again, that, um, uh, the mayor, having Andy Kilpatrick work with the city attorney to try to come up with a remedy to that and then get back with this body to let us know what that, that remedy, um, is. Um, I, I would appreciate that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I think the only other comment that I have, I think that, uh, Vice President Hussein made a good comment about this not matching the master plan. Um, the only other argument that we haven't really addressed, the CUP is, uh, an obsolete zoning code and uh, one of the arguments that the zoning administrator made was that, well, we need to review these obsolete zoning codes. However, uh, I, I believe that it was confirmed to committee. I was just looking over the minutes on this, that, um, under form-based code, CUP, the, this, this particular, uh, piece, this particular parcel would be included in low, uh, low-density residential anyway. So it's not, this body doesn't necessarily need to take this out of the CUP designation for it then to be designated low-density. So, um, I will not be supporting this as well, uh, for that reason. Thank you.
It's me, isn't it? Um, that is, I see no further hands. So Councilmember Spitsy, I do not recall if you made the motion. I believe you did. This is a motion by Councilmember Spitsy. Um, any further discussion? Seeing now, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, adoption of Z nine of twenty twenty, Councilmember.
No.
Councilmember Spitsy.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Eight A's, or zero A's, eight Mays, the ordinance is not adopted. And that takes us to the
Yes, Mr. Clerk, uh, just for the council's record, we will have one item on the consent agenda. It'll be the Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program grant application. We have to remove the extension of the declaration of state emergency. There's an amendment that's needed on that. Mr. Vice President.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Did you remove, remove?
Yes, I, I removed the, uh, emergency order, uh, extension.
Okay. Thank you so much. So the consent agenda then only includes a grant application for the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program, uh, Bridge Program. Um, I think that's the shortest motion I've ever had to make under the consent agenda. So I appreciate, uh, appreciate it very much. And that being said, I would move, uh, the consent agenda.
Very good. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the consent agenda.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's, uh, the item is adopted. Uh, so now we are to the, uh, extend the declaration of this emergency.
Yes, uh, and the only change here is that we're moving it from, um, April fourteenth to the twenty-eighth. Um, that would be, uh, in the last paragraph. Let me pull it up here for you in writing. Um, it's April twenty-eighth, right there. So that would be the change is, um, extending that to the next meeting. Uh, we're, we're moving this task back to the mayor's office for them to determine based on the information that's in front of them when to move that. So we're relying on their office to refer us with those. So I, rather than proving it today and then having them come to us next week and say, I gotta refer another one because it's so soon. We give them a two, uh, extra two weeks on that in case things change after the Miosha rules change or whatnot, but that'll give us a little extra time on that. So that's the only change there. It continues the extension of the state of emergency. So, Mr. Vice President. Um, I, I would hand the gavel over to you and move the resolution.
All right. So there is a, uh, motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, Clerk Swop, please take the roll.
On the resolution to extend the declaration, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsy.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's, that is adopted. That takes us to SLU five of twenty twenty.
All right.
For, yeah, you have the gavel.
Got it back. All right. Thank you. Um, that one is Councilmember, it's, tonight is Patricia's night. Coming up, Patricia tonight. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is a special land use permit for seven twenty-seven Sparrow Avenue, which used to be St. Casimir's Church, um, to allow for the, um, construction or rehab into a community center outreach facility and a transitional housing shelter um, in the A residential district. Um, what we've been told is that, um, the entire footprint, of course, will be used, but that there will be, um, uh, there will be opportunity for community activities, um, in the center as well. Um, I don't know what else to say about it other than to move the resolution for action. Um, if any of the other council members want to, um, expand on that, that's fine, but at this point I'll just move the resolution.
Councilmember, uh, Jackson.
Thank you. I'll just add that I've heard only support from people on this, uh, not even one single person, uh, even privately told me that they don't support this. And I know it'll also headquarter and again allow extra space and including the um, youth temporary and more long-term homeless shelter, which I think is gonna be very important. So I'll definitely be supporting this and I can speak for the most part out of everybody I heard, even from that neighborhood, they supported as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar, would you like, uh, you have your hand up. Sorry, I was gonna, would you like to address, I know there was a question two weeks ago about whether some of the activities that go on there will continue under new, under new ownership. So if you'd like to address that, please. And then whatever you were gonna raise your hand about. You're muted. Kathy. Kathy, you're muted. Sounded, it looked exciting.
I know. I started talking with my hands, but I need them to hold down my space bar. So I'm actually sitting in the principal's office at Saint Cas as we speak. And and I can tell you that I closely monitor the Morris Park Facebook page. I have been in contact with Julie Thomasma, the director at Child and Family Charities, and we've been we've had tours in here, their board and community members, and the synergy here is amazing. I know that there were concerns I did not get to address last week, so thank you for bringing that up. Folks were saying that, you know, the gym had been open for voting in the past. And I believe they are open to continuing that into the future. Keeping this a pulling place. They want the the facilities to be open when they can be for community use. There will obviously be a lot of programs and taking up space in here, but but the gym and the kitchen and the farmer's market will stay. I I don't know. The soup kitchen that was here has left and found a new home, but that doesn't mean that we aren't going to partner to try to start a new meal program here when COVID is over so that we can serve both the community neighbors around here and the families that are served by a child and family. They're supportive of the pantry that's outside. They're just, they're wonderful partners. And I just, I've I've not heard one. Well, actually, in the beginning, there were some, a few concerns, but Julie did such a good job reaching out to the community to allay those fears. And they're just wonderful partners. And they've been around here for over a hundred years and Saint Casimir turned a hundred years old. So their mission and the diocese's mission for what would be done here is is they match, they align wonderfully. So I just, I wanted to say I support this wholeheartedly. And then my second reason for raising my hand is, I don't know if I can actually vote on this. If, and I don't know, like, I'm going to be a tenant in the building where they're going to be. So do I need to recuse myself on this vote?
We'll ask the city attorney.
So, yes, you said the magic word. You've raised the issue of conflict. So under the charter, there has to be a vote about whether or not you can vote on this, and you're not entitled to vote. And it'll be a five-vote item for a conflict. So there should be a motion to to excuse you from voting. And you can vote on it, and it's a five-vote item.
Is there a motion to recuse, excuse Councilmember Dunbar from voting on item five?
I would move the recusal.
Y'all gotta carry this for me.
What's that?
It said, y'all gotta carry this for me.
I would, I would advise if you're accusing, you should probably stop lobbying at this point. All right, there's a motion before us. I don't know if we need any discussion, but we'll we'll take a vote now if there's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
On the recusal, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Yes.
Six A's, one A. The recusal is approved.
All right. So the next item is voting on the actual resolution that Councilmember Spitzley moved. Any further discussion? I'm seeing now. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
I can't. Yes, I carry trouble unmuting myself. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's. The resolution is adopted. And that takes us to the advanced peace partnership.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a substitute. I have a substitute as well. So I need to move the substitute.
Okay, let me get that over. Okay, the substitute's been moved. Let me find the, I don't have the draft in front of me.
Jerry, do you, can you provide the draft, please? And share it.
Oh, here we go. She sent it to me. He's very fast. Okay, so let me put this up up here for you real quick.
And I'll just kind of tell you what the two differences are.
That'd be great.
Yep, no problem. So the first difference is in light of what the mayor shared with us earlier today was to there's a couple of things. There's a, there's a whereas originally it said, whereas the city of Lansing will support a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over three years through a email from the city attorney, and I should have caught it, but I didn't. City councils can't buy in future city councils, and so we needed to just you know, focus on the current year. We originally had a hundred and seventy thousand in there, but I specifically asked the mayor what he had planned on appropriating. He said two hundred and forty thousand, and so we changed that. So that's one of the changes. The second change is the be it resolved. And and the be it resolved reflects the funding commitment is contingent upon the agreement of other local units of government located within Ingham County to share the cost. And that's just basically, you know, recognizing and acknowledging that this is a regional effort. And that, you know, other, other, there will be other organizations also providing funding. So with that, before I move the resolution, I I did want to respond to one of the comments about
Councilmember Spitzley, if we could move this up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. We need to move the substitute. Please, thank you. And with that, I'll move the substitute.
Thank you. Substitute has been moved. Mr. Clerk, would you please call her on the adoption of this? Councilmember Wood, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. And this speaks to the substitute. So what we're being asked to do is to pass a resolution committing us to budget dollars that we've not had a budget discussion on yet. Is is that what I understand?
That would be correct. I mean, in in a nutshell, that would be correct. Initially, the dollar amount was, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which had been mentioned last summer as part of some discussions. And so I was going to put that in there, but hearing the mayor's hearing the comment from the mayor, I changed it to two hundred and forty thousand. So, yes.
Mr. City Attorney, I guess my question is, you know, the fact that we're pulling something out of the budget to vote on now. I I just, I'm not saying that I don't support it. I'm just looking at you know, the process that we have. We were given, we we appropriate, we do not appropriate. We approve appropriations. We just receive the budget. So is this something? I I just have some questions on on the process that we're in.
And Jim, before you, before you, before you respond, Jim, really quick, I mean, the, what we're approving really is support of the resolution and and support of the advanced peace initiative. I mean, I I included the dollar amount because I wanted to be clear that we, you know, we needed to appropriate or support it by way of dollars. And so, yeah, I I think it's, you know, I, you know, the resolution is is for, you know, so they can receive other grant dollars. But I wanted to be accurate in the in the amount of dollars that that the city of Lansing or the city council were willing to provide in support. So so, City Attorney, please, please help me.
First of all, the resolution I have has a hundred and seventy thousand. Has that been changed to?
We just moved the substitute.
Yeah, we're speaking to the sub right now, Jim.
I have a substitute that says a hundred and seventy. That's why I asked the question. And it's in the whereas clause. The rest of the resolution, I mean, if it were to be appropriated, I would say it's a six-vote item. It's really not covered by the charter under supplemental appropriations because you'd be appropriating in advance when you're doing the budget. But it doesn't appropriate. It's just really a statement of intent at this point.
That that's the clarification that I I needed. So let's just say, and and I'm just using, you know, this far-fetched, you know, may we have a disaster on our hands and we're not able to appropriate that. We are not bound by this resolution where we put the fact that we have the intent of moving the two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is is that what I'm hearing from you?
This is not, this is an intent. It is not an appropriation.
Right.
If that clause were in the resolve clause, I would say something different, but it is.
Okay. All right. I just want, I just want to be sure on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood, for that clarification, Mr. City Attorney, Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Dunbar. We're still adopting the sub yet. We haven't.
Yeah, we're still on the substitute.
Yep, I I was just going to say that I I think the the important part of this is not necessarily where the money comes from. We were trying to be responsible and identify a source of funds so that it couldn't be refused, you know, on the basis that we have a budget crunch and there's nowhere for the money to come from. So like when we do budget priorities, this to us is a budget priority, that this be included. It's just an interesting timing that the that this resolution isn't coming up until the day that the budget's already proposed, because it would have been to encourage the mayor to do this. But he proactively did it. So what we're dealing with now is that many of the other foundations and municipalities that are waiting to enact their portions of this are looking to the city to see that we've allocated the funds and we're moving forward. So this is also serving as kind of proof for them to that that we are going to participate so that they can move forward with their funding mechanisms as well.
Thank you. I see Councilmember, oh, no, does Councilmember Wood, your hand is still up?
Yes, I just want to clarify. Kathy said that we're allocating and and I just heard Jim say, no, we weren't allocating.
We're not. We're not.
All right, just so that.
I'll correct my word. We're saying that we should do this.
Okay, I just
Yeah.
don't want.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, on adoption of this sub.
Okay, on the substitute, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's. The substitute is adopted.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Would you like to move the resolution?
I would. And before I move the resolution, I would like to thank my colleagues on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for co-sponsoring this resolution for me. So thank you, Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Dunbar. One of the questions that we did ask, that were asked during public comment was the involvement of the city of Lansing, and there was some concern about that. It's my understanding that the Michigan Public Health Institute will be the holder of this program and 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 that that was done by design to kind of make it, you know, as as we talk about kind of a separate entity from the local government, the police department, the county. And so I hope that addresses the concern. I I did want to thank a few people before I move the resolution because I think it's important. You know, we 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 started this discussion last summer with Jessica Yorko in the Ingham County Health Department, and we had a meeting. A kind of, they expended dollars to have Mr. Bogan come to the city of Lansing and and the village. Mike and Erica Lynn, and I'd like to thank them. They hosted the meeting at the village where Mr. Bogan kind of gave an overview of the advanced peace initiative. And so, folks, I'd like to thank, excuse me, from Ingham County, of course, is Jessica Yorko, but also Linda Vale. Also, Rinald Jean Lewis. I'm sorry if I messed up your name. Mr. Darren Southworth from the Ingham County Jail, Carol Siemens and Scott Hughes from the Ingham County Prosecutor's Office. Again, Paul Elam from the Michigan Public Health Institute, Daryl Slaughter from the Ingham County Board of Commissioners. It was passed unanimously out of his Ingham County Board of Law Courts Committee and then unanimously passed from the Finance Committee. I would also like to thank Fonda Brewer from Delta Township and then the East Lansing folks as well. John Edmonds, Rena Risper, and Mike McKissick. Also, Chief Green and Captain Bacchus. They were also involved this summer. Adam Hussein, of course. But it was, it was an effort to, you know, get educated, bring him in, have him meet with various groups to explain the advanced peace initiative. You know, one of the striking one of the striking statistics is it costs about a million dollars when there's a homicide in the community. And so this is one of those things where I think even though the mayor has mentioned that he's going to fund it in his budget, it is, it is important for the resolution to pass to show support for advanced peace and the work that has been done up to this point. And to show that council is supportive. And, you know, we also talked about it earlier this year and our budget priorities and how advanced peace was important. And when we had our budget priorities and our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee earlier this year. And so this is something that we we can't we cannot afford not to fund. That double negative always gets me, but it is an important thing. It's important for our community to address gun violence. And so I am pleased to move this resolution for passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. We have two hands up for discussion. Councilmember Dunbar, follow the Councilmember Betts.
Thank you very much. I I want to echo what Councilmember Spitzley was saying regarding the cost of gun violence in our community. That it's, it's not, I mean, I attacked this from a fiscal perspective when I wrote about this because that's usually the argument that communities make is that we don't have the money. And so I framed the argument about how can we, how can we be spending so much money right now investigating what is a record number of shootings in Lansing last year? Record number of gun-related homicides and gun-related injuries and the amount of governmental resources that go into that at all levels, from response and emergency care and courts and prosecution and investigations and victims' services and incarceration and all these things. And I really want to point out as well that it's not just a fiscal issue because every life lost is invaluable. The the social impact of gun violence goes far beyond whatever we can quantify in numbers of dollars. And the amount of money that 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 we spend, and and the estimates are conservative. They say a million dollars for every gun-related homicide. That's with one suspect. And I think it's four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a shooting. There are communities in the country where those costs are upward of two million and over a million respectively, just depending on the the cost of things where they are. And so, you know, it is, it is incumbent on us as we re-envision. And I really do collectively hope that all of us are on board with re-envisioning how we address crime and how we address social services and equity in the community. Because there is no, there, it's all tied together. If you don't spend it on the front end, you're going to spend three times as much on the back end. And and we are trying to flip the dolphin here to get the money that's paid on the on the back end moved up front so that we can provide job training and programming and all kinds of things that can get people on a path where the inequities aren't fueling gun violence and other violence. So I I am very glad that we're moving forward with this. And I also want to So I I am very glad that we're moving forward with this. And I also want to say, because somebody did mention during comments. About police. And yes, I've heard that Chief Green supports this program, which I'm very happy for. But they're not going to work with him. They do not work with the police department. They they are very, very, um. Careful. They work with people who have been offenders before. They build trust in the community with people who are, um. Are probably offenders that have not gotten into the system yet to kind of, uh, combat gun violence before it happens. Um, but they are not sharing names. They are not collaborating. They are not, in order to build trust with the people who need to be. At the center of this program. They they work independently and they are not working with police. So I I just need to make that very clear. And that's exactly why MPHI. Is doing the study and why UC Berkeley did the studies out in California for Sacramento and Richmond and Scranton, Scranton. I remember, maybe that's New York. I'm probably missm- misshading another S name. But anyway, um. We will have results, um, but they will not be calculated by the City of Lansing. They will be calculated independently. That's my.
Thank you, Councilmember Bets.
Thank you, President Spatafor. And I fully intend on supporting this as well for all the reasons mentioned above. Uh, one technical question for Jim. It looks like under the therefore be it resolved, um, that we are resolving that Ingham County does something. Are we able to do that in a resolution? Uh, that's that's my only question.
Mr. City Attorney, you are, um, on mute.
This resolution, uh, Councilman Bets does not really appropriate any money at this point. Is an expression of intent. And one of the, and, uh. In the dicees of intent is that there be. Other units of government that will join in here. So there will be a contract at some point. Uh, where all of this is taken care of. So that's why that's in there. It's not a problem.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, um, Councilmember Spitzley made the motion. There's proper motion for us. Approval of the resolution. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Got to unmute yourself, though, first.
I mean, it's only been a year.
It's contagious.
Listen, we're all, we're all in this together. We're all in this together.
Okay, um, on the resolution, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Eight A zero nades, the resolution is adopted. And that takes us to ordinances for introduction. You have one second. We have, uh, Councilmember Spitzley introducing ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal Chapter six thirty, section six thirty point one. For criminal misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Catified Ordinances to eliminate loitering in places where prostitution or solicitation. For lude conduct occurs, the ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Equity, Diverse- Diversity and Inclusion.
Councilperson Spitzley, would you like to?
Thank you, Ms. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to just again thank the council for approving the advanced peace initiative. I'm I'm. Proud and thanks. So thank you for that. The second thing is, these are not my ordinances. Um, these are Councilwoman Jackson's. He put these forth. They were brought to the, uh, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and. Um, there were a number of them. Um, and there are some that are tabled. We tabled, um, six. Seven, eight, nine. We tabled at least ten for further discussion. Um, these, the ordinances that are up here for introduction and say on the public hearing. Were discussed. Um, the chief of police was part of the discussion. The courts are part of the discussion. Um, and the city attorney were part of the discussion. Most of these, um, ordinances that are up for, um. Uh, repeal, um, were either ordinances where there is another, um, mechanism on the books. To, um, to enforce something like that, or they are unconstitutional, or they were just. Obsolete. And so I want to, um, allow, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, the, um. The 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 pleasure of introducing these ordinances to set the public hearing and and thank him for his hard work on this, Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you. So. I'll briefly touch these because Councilwoman Spitzley kind of summed up. The justification for the ones we see today. And basically, these are the ones that passed out a committee without. Much, um. Opposition and Chief Green was a part of these conversations. And I can go, I don't know, uh, Mr. President, if you want me to go one by one or just move them all, but basically. To summarize, Chief Green, um, agreed that. The L L P D does not have an interest in enforcing these and practically they don't enforce them. For the fact that they looked at their records and were able to, uh, ascertain that. For example, last year, there were no prosecutions. Um, I think for all of these. That are listed today, there's pretty much. And correct me if I'm wrong for the people who were there, but there was pretty much little or no prosecutorial action taken. Um, it does, we don't know necessarily how many people were investigated for any of these things. But as far as the records in district court, we had Anita Brewer. She's, um. Court administrator in our Lansing court. We had our city attorney and the assistant city attorneys who prosecute these. And for the most part, there were no objections to them. So. Um, six thirty dot fourteen, loitering in places where prostitution or solicitation for lude conduct occurs or has occurred. Um, if you actually look at the rest of the. The ordinance here, it says a public place is any street, sidewalk, alley, park, building, vehicle, any of these things. And the thing that was interesting, it says occurs or occurred, which means in the past, if it's happened. You can't be in that area. Um, this sounds more criminal than it actually is. I would submit that each of these ordinances, the act itself is not a matter of public safety. And really shouldn't be a crime worth jail and fines and probation. Each one of these, if you take the actual conduct, it doesn't put anybody in jeopardy. Um, and it's not something that I think as a community, we think, oh, that's so bad. So with that first one. Loitering in a place is not engaging in prostitution or encouraging it or attempting to. It's being in a place where it once happened or has happened. So that in itself isn't public safety and there was no objection to get rid of it. So. It voted out of committee three O. The next one, six fifty O four, playing in the street.
Um, Councilmember Jackson, um, I'm getting told if we could do one at a time with a vote and all that, that'd be real, that would be ideal so we can get them done. I appreciate that there's a package here, but we have to set the. The hearings on them. Um, I appreciate the explanation.
I would move six thirty dot one four for a public hearing.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on six thirty, uh, dot one four for a public hearing and and the date on that is.
April twelfth.
April twelfth. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. And this would go for all of them based on Councilmember Spitzley's, um, comments that some of these had. Um, other ordinances out there that did the same or were similar in effect. Um, if before the public hearing, the city attorney could provide, uh, the council with those, I would appreciate it. Instead of me asking that for each one of these, I'm I'm doing it in a group and if he could provide those. Um, if there are, um, other ordinances out there that reflect these. And or other statutes that can be utilized instead, I would appreciate that.
Kim? It's not just that there are other laws, Councilmember, uh, Wood. It may be that. The language is now unconstitutional, uh, so there could be other reasons why the ordinance.
If you could provide us that, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. There's been a motion by Councilmember Jackson to set the public hearing on six three dot one four for April twelfth. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, saying the public hearing, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Eight A zero nades, the public hearing is set. Uh, next we have, uh, Councilmember Jackson introduced ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan. To repeal Chapter six fifty, section six fifty point zero four. A criminal misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Catified Ordinances to eliminate playing in the streets. The ordinance is read a first time by its title. And referred to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, um, playing in the streets is also covered by city ordinance. Six five eight point O four obstruction of public ways. I would move this for a public hearing. Playing in the streets does not sound like something that we want to have on our books as a criminal offense. Maybe it could go to civil infraction, but at the same time, there are other ordinances that would stop anybody from. Uh, impeding traffic or slowing traffic up in the streets that is not playing in the streets. It's the other one obstruction of public. Right of ways or pub- public, um, ways. So. By eliminating this ordinance, it will not give free rein for kids to play basketball and not move out of the street. Because there's another one that would require them to move out of the street. So I would move for a public hearing for April twelfth.
Thank you. There is a motion on the table and I see no discussion. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, I'm saying the hearing, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Uh, eight A zero nades, the resolution is set. The hearing is adopted. And that takes us to the next one. Councilmember Jackson introduced, um, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal. Chapter six fifty six, section fifty, six fifty six point zero four, a criminal misdemeanor. Under the General Offenses Code of the Catified Ordinances to eliminate prohibition of bicycles. On Riverfront Park during an organized event.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. You're, you're right. Um, so this one is outdated. It's from nineteen eighty-seven where. Addado Park was called Riverfront Park and the festivals listed here that you can't ride your bike in. Are no longer part of city events, including the ethnic festival, the River Fest. North Lansing Fun Fest, Black Cultural Festival and Mexican Festival. I may be wrong, but I don't think those are any a part of the city's schedule anymore. Um, again, this is something that we should not criminalize and as city attorney people or city. Councilpeople, you know, we make and we take away the ordinances. And I think this is one that we should take away because the conduct is not that serious for jail. So I would move that we set this for a public hearing on April twelfth.
Right. It's been moved properly by Councilmember Jackson besides, uh, wishing River Fest would come back. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, let's have one answer in the public hearing.
Okay, I'm saying the hearing, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilperson Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Eight A zero nades, the resolution, saying the hearing is adopted. And that just to the next one. Uh, Councilmember Jackson introducing the ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal. Chapter six fifty eight, section six fifty eight point zero three. A criminal misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Catified Ordinances to eliminate annoying persons. The ordinance is referred to for the first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I think this might be our most infamous one, annoying persons. I think for the most part, you know, everybody has a joke about it. Um, and everybody could be guilty and thrown in jail. There was conversation about being willfully annoying, which is part of the statute. You have to willfully annoy somebody. But the concern was twofold. One, that, um, annoying is kind of vague and it's kind of hard to determine what exactly that is. To criminally prosecute somebody and it could therefore possibly be unconstitutional, including. From our city attorney said it could possibly be unconstitutional. Um, there is other. Um, ordinances and laws like no stalking and no being a disorderly person that could be applied. But here, this one is possibly unconstitutional and I would move to set it for a public hearing on April twelfth.
Okay, so a proper motion has been made. Um, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will ask the clerks, please call the roll.
And, uh, saying the public hearing on six fifty eight point zero three. Uh, repeal, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Eight A zero nades, the public hearing is set. Takes us to the next one. Councilmember Jackson introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal. Uh, Chapter six fifty eight, section six fifty eight point zero six. A criminal misdemeanor misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Catified Ordinances to eliminate that no person shall beg. Place or go door to door requesting donations for personal gain. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee, um, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This ordinance, uh, begging in public places, according to our city attorney, is possibly also unconstitutional. There hasn't been any prosecution or charges since two thousand and eight. And it was previously decriminalized from, I believe, a past administration. Um, and there are other ordinances that could cover the undesired conduct of maybe somebody. Being on this, in the street or, um, harassing people or touching people or littering or being. Um, intoxicated in public or any of those things are covered, but begging is probably unconstitutional. And we wouldn't, we shouldn't want to criminalize our population who. Unfortunately, may have to do that and does do that and put them in jail or even have them face prosecution for it. Um, there was no objection from the city attorney's office or Chief Green, and I would move this for a public hearing on April twelfth.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Um, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's clerk, please call the roll, say in public hearing.
Um, saying the public hearing on six fifty eight point zero six. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Eight A zero nades, the public hearing is set. Next, we have six eighty point zero three, uh, Councilmember. Jackson introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal Chapter six eighty, section six eighty point zero three. an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six eighty, section six eighty point zero three, a criminal misdemeanor under the general offenses code of the classified ordinances to eliminate using profane language in a building or any property adjacent to any building in the city occupied as public, private or parochial school. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the committee on equity, diversity and inclusion.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This one, don't worry, everybody, because it will not allow for people to cuss a storm up next to a school. Because if you look at our offense ordinances on um, six fifty oh two, you cannot disturb the peace or willfully or maliciously make or assist or making any noise disturbance or improper diversion, which the peace and quietude of or good order of any private or public or parochial schools disturbed. So that will still be in place where you can't make a disturbance to divert from school. But the one that says you can't swear in a building next to a school is the one that we're looking to repeal. There has been no charges made on this in the past that the police chief or the city attorney is aware of. And there were, was no objection to getting rid of it. Like I just mentioned, there's other ordinances that will cover the undesired conduct of cussing out loud and disturbing students. That will still be illegal, but we don't need this ordinance to do it. And I would move for a public hearing for April twelfth.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Um, it has been moved. Um, let's record note that Councilmember Dunbar is in a parochial school at the time. Um, I'd like to make a comment. I don't swear right now, Councilmember Dunbar.
I was gonna say, I could probably fund half the city budget if this was actually enforced. So.
I will remind you that we are on public access and that I would encourage you to follow the law at this for the moment.
I'm, I'm following.
Very good. Uh, thank you on setting the hearing. Uh, it's been moved by Councilmember Jackson. If we could, uh, call the roll, please.
On repealing six eighty point zero three public hearing, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, eight years, zero days, the public hearing is set. Uh, so next we have Councilmember Jackson introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six eighty, section six eighty point zero six, a criminal misdemeanor under the general offenses code of the classified ordinances to eliminate borrowing money or anything of value from a student at a school. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the committee on equity, diversity and inclusion.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So I'll just read the quick paragraph, the whole thing. No person shall borrow or attempt to borrow any money or thing of value from any student in any public, private or parochial school or in any public, private or parochial school property in the city or during any time when any such student is going or returning from any regular scheduled session of such school without first obtaining the written approval of the principal of such school or other person designated by the principal. Um, so this is kind of strange. Um, it's very broad and it says anything of value. Um, you can imagine that it is designed for possibly people trying to get money and things from students that's going to and from school. Um, there has been no prosecutions that the city attorney or the chief of police is aware of. This is from nineteen eighty six and um, there's still other ordinances like no harassing, no stalking, no assaulting people that are applicable here. Um, there was no objection to its repeal and I would move to set it for a public hearing, April twelfth.
Councilmember Jackson has made a proper motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing enough, please call the roll. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Council, Mr. Cook, you're muted if you were trying to call the roll.
Again, we've only been doing this a year.
Am I muted? Like, did I do, did I do it wrong?
Okay, on setting the hearing for six eighty point zero six, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Eight years, zero days, that public hearing is set for April twelfth. And that takes us to the final one of the evening. Councilmember Jackson introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six ninety six, section six ninety six point zero two, a criminal misdemeanor under the general offenses code of the classified ordinances to eliminate that no person shall carry any firearm, air rifle, bow and arrow, slingshot, crossbow or other dangerous weapon in any place. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the committee on equity, diversity and inclusion.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So this one is basically illusory in the fact that it doesn't that the grant or take away anybody, any additional gun rights um, that are state law doesn't already prescribe. Uh, Michigan um, exclusively basically regulates the carrying, open carry and concealed carry laws. We already have laws where you can't point a gun or weapon at anybody. That would be a felonious assault, a felony. You can't brandish a weapon or gun or anything where you're like looking menacingly or intimidating people or cussing someone out and having your gun around. You still can't do any of those things. And you still can't carry a gun without a concealed weapon without a permit. Um, so this law is basically just saying, follow the state law, which is already set in place. There was some conversation in committee about, well, does the state law cover bow and arrows? Cause in this one, you could possibly be charged for carrying a bow and arrow and we weren't exactly sure about the state. But um, that wasn't enough to prevent it from being moved out of committee. So people, don't, don't worry. We're not saying everybody can carry a gun. We're saying you still have to follow the same laws that you always had to follow and that this ordinance um, if anything, would risk possibly violating the second amendment if it tries to um, restrict some of the already legal means to carry, but it is not promoting any bad acts with guns because everything bad with a gun is still illegal. It's just that you have to follow the state law. Um, I would move to set a public hearing for April twelfth.
Thank you. The proper motion before a public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask Kirk color roll.
Hey, on the public hearing for six, six point zero two, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Eight years, zero days, the public hearing is set. We will have a funny evening, April twelfth.
Incidentally, folks, I will be absent on April twelfth. Um, that concludes the ordinance for introduction, Mr. Cook.
We are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. And again, please um, raise your hand if you wish to address the city council. Um, star nine on a phone, uh, raise hand icon. Uh, if you can find that. Uh, ultimately, you could use press Y at the same time on the windows or option and Y on the same time. At the same time on an apple. Uh, we will uh, accept additional raised hands uh, up through the first speaker or at least three minutes into speakers. Please begin raising your hand. And again, that's any topic related to the operation or government, governance of the city. Uh, you'll have three minutes to speak and uh, it is your time to speak. It is not a question and answer or debate period of this public comment. Uh, and while folks are getting their hands raised, uh, we are to reports of city officers, boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, Mr. Vice President.
I would move that all items be considered as, um, or I'm sorry, I would move that all items um, considered as, but in full and the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
Thank you very much. There is proper motion. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Eight years, zero days, the referrals are authorized. We have items from the city clerk regarding uh, tri county regional planning commission audits.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Ministers, boards, commissions and authorities, boards and commissions.
Place that file.
Uh, Lansing Economic Development Corporation twenty twenty annual report.
Community of unplanning and place that file.
Uh, items from the mayor, uh, setting a show cause hearing and orders for make safer demolish at three fourteen Bingham.
Committee on Public Safety.
Act ninety nine financing, Jackson Field Stadium.
Uh, that would be the committee of the whole.
Uh, ballot proposal, essential services, millage restoration.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, the budget.
Committee of the whole, internal auditor.
Uh, public act ninety nine financing, Johnson Controls.
Committee of the whole.
And items from the elected officers compensation commission, setting a public hearing in consideration of amendment to chapter two eighty, section two eighty point zero three, to provide that the commission shall meet in even numbered years and the corresponding uh, ordinance.
Start that in the committee on city operations.
Um, the community development block grant.
Uh, committee on the whole.
Uh, item from the board of water and light, external auditor for the Lansing Board of Water and Light, selection of Baker Chili.
Committee on Ways and Means and our internal auditors as well.
Communications and petitions uh, from Joseph Darby about Woodbridge Manor Apartments.
Committee on Public Safety.
From Lauren Whaley about various city matters.
Please place that on file with the council.
Notes from the liquor control commission, Concord Lansing downtown for a transfer of a license. And various permits under that license.
Committee on City Operations.
Communication from downtown Lansing, Inc., Rio Town Commercial Association, Old Town Commercial Association regarding social district boundaries.
Committee on City Operations.
And we are too relaxed by council members.
Councilmembers and councilmembers wishing to make remarks, Councilmember Wood.
Um, thank you. Well, we've been in our council meeting. Um, I know we've had a moment of meditation already, but um, in Boulder, Colorado, this evening, there were multiple um, deaths um, involved in a grocery store shooting along with a police officer. Um, and um, so if we could remember uh, the residents of that community and what they're going through right now as they are in the process of notifying families of the death of loved ones. Um, I, I think we need to remember that, especially when we, we're talking about um, issues in our own community. Uh, we can see, we see what's happened in another one. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I just have something unrelated to mention. Um, you saw communication on um, potentials um, social district boundaries. I know the council member Dunbar and the rest of the operations committee will be looking at that very soon. So we're asking folks to reach out to us either through us directly or your, your ward reps or contacting the city council offices with ideas about social district boundaries. Um, I know we don't necessarily have a defined process here for that, um, kind of make it up as we go because that's the nature of this, but um, that's, I just want to make sure we put that out there, remind folks that that was coming. Councilmember Dunbar. You're muted, Councilmember Dunbar. There you go. Nope.
Yeah. I was, thank you for saying that because I completely forgot about that because I've had so many people that are reaching out to me in different ways. And um, I think those of us on the committee are going to need to put together a spreadsheet of what we're receiving from where, because we don't really have a, one spot to take this information. Um, except for, you know, and then we can consider it in committee, but um, yes, please do let us know if there are social districts that you want us to consider for outdoor seating. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. I see no other hands, Mr. Cook. The floor is yours. Uh, yeah.
Okay, um, to, we're to the mayor's comments.
No comments, no.
Okay, public comment on city government related matters. Uh, again, uh, I've gone through a few times tonight how to raise your hand, but raise your hand and we will accept additional raised hands uh, through the first speaker. And uh, the first speaker is Verisha Kelly, followed by Floretta.
Um, good evening, everybody. Um, initially I had said I wanted to comment on the rezoning. However, um, that has passed. I want to thank you for supporting us in the Churchill Down area. So um, this is an excellent meeting. I'm enjoying it. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Floretta, followed by Zach Waile.
Can you hear me?
Yes. And if you want to give your last name, please feel free.
Yes, Claretta Duckett Freeman. The black elected, appointed and positional leaders. Accountability is an act of love. Of all thirteen Black Lives Matter guiding principles, the one BLM Lansing chose to elevate is our chief guiding principle is loving engagement. It is out of our love for ourselves, our people and our community that we are calling in black leaders who sit at tables of white supremacy, justifying to yourselves that you have more wisdom, experience and expertise than those of us in the streets and in our neighborhoods where the pain and trauma are real and visceral. We understand that you believe in cooperation and see compromise as progress. We disagree. We did not ask or give you our consent to speak for us anymore than we assert that we speak for you. We are the people. We are the people who don't get invited to tables of white supremacy because we know it is our duty to disrupt transgenerational cycles of trauma and harm. Demanding accountability and results is not an unrealistic expectation. It is what we are owed by our elected officials and institutional leaders and whom power is vested by the people. Perhaps it is because our paths as people building power do not often cross with those of you who take power for granted that we find ourselves at a crossroads. Learning to hear those people with lived experiences creates a better and richer understanding of everyday black people's problems. Understanding that those closest to the problems are often, often more relative to the solution. All so-called black leaders must learn to listen to the people. Are you aware the Black Lives Matter called for Andy Short to resign because of male documented and publicized harms to black people? How can you sit at a table he created to silence and discredit those who made our demands clear and expect us to remain silent? We have been patient and we have made our concerns known in private conversations out of respect for you. The truth is that you are complicit in the oppression of black people who are evident in our demand to defund the police and to build a community safety system that is accountable to the people. Twisting our demands into reforms and increased police funding and reinforced power and oppressive systems is a disservice to the black community. Allowing white leaders to divide us as a community is a choice. The side you chose places you on the wrong side of history in a time of global uprising and a long overdue meaning of white supremacy. You have chosen to side. You have chosen to side with maintaining racial hierarchy and your actions have real consequences for people fighting for justice, for their loved ones and their livelihoods.
Thank you. Next, we have Zach Whaley, followed by Rob Thomas.
Hi, thanks. I wanted to join again and just voice my support for Black Lives Matter Michigan and Lansing's call. For everything that Claretta just read, which I, I love that she read the entire press release from B L M Lansing today. It was beautifully written and deserves to be here, heard by everybody on this council especially. Um, one of the points like she mentioned is defunding the police. I know it's something I talk about every week, but it feels especially apparent, given some of the topics that we talked about this week or at this meeting. The stats that councilperson Dunbar was throwing out as far as, and Spitzer were throwing out as far as the cost associated with what happens when a great harm is done to our community, like a shooting or a homicide, right? We're talking hundreds of thousands or in excess of millions of dollars. Yet this one program that costs about a quarter million dollars can stop potentially tens or hundreds of violent acts like that. That's only one of the myriad examples of how far preventative and supportive measures can go, even just from a purely capitalist gross aspect of actually preventing harm and healing in our communities as opposed to just trying to incarcerate them and continue that cycle of harm. Again, like all of council persons, Jackson's motions to get rid of these totally useless safety standards. Safety ordinances are a perfect example of that. Like I think we can generally agree, like kids probably shouldn't play in the street, right? Like we probably shouldn't be like having loan sharks solicit kids while they're at school. But the question is, are these things that should be legislated and regulated through the penal process? Like, should a kid that's playing in the street, like I used to play hockey when I was in like elementary school with the kids down the road? Like, should we all get thrown in jail? Is that the way we want to support our community? If a kid is, like somebody is standing next to Jimmy John's and once upon a time, there was, you know, a, a working, a sex worker there, like should that person be thrown in jail? It's a lot like what Mike said about, we just need to reframe things outside of this white supremacist box of like our job, the, the job of the state, the job of our government is to support its citizens. It isn't to further ruin their lives by imposing fines and fees and all these hurdles to jump through. I, I talk to my partner daily about clients that she sees who have committed really terrible things against other people and who truly want to be rehabilitated and are forced to go through all these things that just constantly get in the way of their actual healing. And I look to all of you to help be a part of that process to reforming that or just abolishing that system. It's not something that can be changed when its intent was punitive to begin with. And again, just looking at from a fiscal standpoint, how much of a return on investment you can get when you actually put the money into the forefront and the supportive measures as opposed to waiting for people to be incapable of supporting themselves.
Thank you. Next is Rob Thomas, followed by Kyle.
Thank you. I will actually be continuing where my sister Claretta left off. Have you spoken to any of the nine individuals who have filed racial discrimination lawsuits? If not, is it because you signed a deal with the city of Lansing that binds you to their will and requires you to protect their interests over those who have been harmed? Are you beginning to understand the harm that you are causing? As long as there are black leaders who are willing to lend their credibility and respectability to cover racial discrimination, there will be no accountability. Without accountability, there will be no transformation, only public relations and political posturing. New programs will be created and your organizations, friends and children will get opportunities that others will never know existed. Literally on the backs of those who have been in city council every week for the past year. In addition to being in the streets, risking our lives, fighting for those whose needs will continue to go unmet. What would you do if you were in our shoes? What is your duty as a black leader? Where is your accountability to those who claim, who you claim to represent? We invite you to come to the community table and give an account to begin healing and building across experiential, economic and generational divides. We know that you too experience micro and macro aggressions because of your proximity to whiteness. We know what it means to have our value determined by our willingness to nod, smile and go along to get along. We are calling you home. Our ancestors sacrificed much and fought hard for us to make quote unquote, good trouble. It is time for you to join the fight for black liberation and stop working to undermine a global movement. Our invitation to accountability, acknowledge the harm perpetrated by the Andy Shore administration. Publicly state that you do not agree or align with the values of white supremacy and tactics that undermine accountability. Divest from work with and support of Shores administration. This letter is being released on Black Lives Matter Lansing social media, distributed to news media and will be sent to each individual we have identified as undermining the grassroots community's voices. In love, truth and justice, the collective membership of Black Lives Matter Lansing. That being said, with my last thirty seconds, Mr. Betts, you said that if the citizens of the first ward were to state that they do not want you on this council, you would go ahead and resign. I believe it has been very evident that they have done so, sir. And I think that you need to address yourself as a person and do what is accordingly right. Because right now it seems like you show up to these meetings for a paycheck and that adds to the egregiousness of everything you have done to this city. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle and feel free to state your last name, followed by Michael Lynn, Jr.
Last name is Richard, R I C H A R D. The I want to say thank you to Clerk Swolpe for our correspondence a few weeks ago. I know I never got back to you. I'm not sure if there's fruit there. I want to say thank you to Councilman Jackson for the fourth order. I sent him, sent you an email tonight. If you're not signed up for the fourth order, you can email him at bryantj.jackson@lansingmi.gov. The moving on, Brandon, please resign. I don't live in the first ward, so you don't technically have to listen to me. But your story about feeling betrayed by a friend after you'd sacrificed your career for this movement is frustrating to me because if you had truly sacrificed your career for this movement, where was the vote of no confidence against Mayor Andy Shore? Right? Like, if, if you truly wanted to sacrifice your career for this movement, you could have been persistent and it, who cares if no one else votes for it? Get them on the record. Make people vote on this issue because it's important to the city. It's important to the people. But no, you're, we're not going to do that. And then we're going to let everyone else know that we were the ones that were betrayed. Um. Andy. So you said you're going to have a conversation with the chief tomorrow regarding the backyard incident. While you're there, if you could also mention the new security cameras downtown. Um, though I'm specifically referring to the ones that are in front of Casa Chex and PNC. They don't seem to match the rest of the cameras. They, they look like they're, I mean, if you haven't seen them, they're about the size of like a tennis ball tube and they're like twelve feet off the ground. Right? They look like you bought them at police states R Us, right? Like, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, like, I work downtown and when I walk downtown and with those cameras around, I don't feel safe. I, I feel like I am living in an oppressive police state. Um, like if you, if, if your worry is, you know, to protect the business owners, that's fine, but at the same time, we need to understand that that's a reactionary measure. Right? You have people in the community that are basically begging for, I mean, at this point, demanding like real change. Right? Real like, like, let's actually get our hands dirty change. And your reaction is, well, let's put up, like the reaction to cities, like, let's put up more cameras, right? It's, it's this punitive thing like, and so I don't, I really don't understand what you're going for. Please resign, defund the police, arrest the cops who killed Anthony Healan. Are you the rest of my time?
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn, Jr., followed by Erica Lynn.
Hello, obviously Andy Shore resigned, but I'm going to get into some more deep stuff. Yesterday, Andy Shore's wife put out a big, long email to all his supporters to let him know that Andy will be starting his campaign on March twenty first. Um, or excuse me, I think it was March twentieth, his birthday was. March twenty first, he went out to campaign on Anthony Healan's birthday, or what would have been Anthony Healan's birthday. I've heard this council come on here disgracefully. It pisses me off so bad. I'm sorry. And you guys continuously give honor to people in Colorado whose families have passed. Have you all talked to the Healan family? Have you spoken to Heather Healan and heard the cry in her voice, the tears while she's holding us for her eighty year old parents? There's information that's been released to her only that she cries through nights, calls me two in the morning to talk about because she can't release this information to her parents because her parents just wouldn't be able to handle it. Where is your guys' representation for them? Brandon Betts, I wasn't even going to acknowledge you on here, but that was your constituent. He lived in the first ward. We're so easy to reach outside of our own community to contact issues and talk about thoughts and prayers. Andy Shore to look outside of his office for racism. What is wrong with you people? You are just citizens of the city. I know most of you personally. You guys are good people when we talk on the phone. When we come on here, I just don't understand where the real love is. Most of you all show me day in and day out that you care about the city when it's comfortable for you. If what you're seeing today with Black Lives Matter and what you're going to see over the next year, you all that are up for these elected positions this year and next year and the following years, the world has changed. You're no longer going to be able to go and pander to pastors. They are not going to matter. Their words, their voices are not going to matter. The people are standing up. And we're not asking for nothing specific or anything crazy. We're asking to stop dying. Thank you, Brian T. Jackson, for bringing off those rules that will only be used against black and brown people when they don't use discretion when dealing with us. The same way that I got fired from the Lansing Fire Department because they got a book two inches deep of rules, just like what Brian T. Jackson just removed, that they're only used when they feel like using against people who they don't like or they want to discriminate against. We got four officers that are still working in that jail who killed somebody. What training did you guys possibly afford to train murder out of them? But we're going to thoughts and prayers for Colorado shootings and the police officer that died there. But I've not one time heard any of you just so easily state Heather Healan, the Healan family, my condolences to you all. Not once. Not once, but I hear her cries. I hear her tears because she has got no justice. Y'all got to do better, man.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Julia Kramer.
I would like to echo in support of the letter that was read by Claretta Duncan, as well as Rob. I support that fully. It's a great, you know, invitation to accountability that I think can apply to a few different areas. Real quick, I do, I also wasn't going to acknowledge Beth's presence here, but I feel like it's something that we have to address because I think it's a bigger picture as far as I've said it before, him even being here. He did state that, you know, if his constituents wanted him to resign, you know, he would, but then really didn't follow up on how that process would go. I am a member of the first ward. I have called for his resignation, will officially do so now. And just to fully state, it wasn't simply your disgusting words, your violent words, your actions. It wasn't even your inaction. It wasn't even just your refusal to listen to the people's voices and to trust black voices. It is literally the foundation that you are built upon, Brandon Betts, that emboldened you to think those thoughts, to say those words and to act on them. That is a problem. That is an inherent issue on who you are as a person. So therefore you are not equipped to hold that seat to speak for the people in the ways that you stated you would do so when you campaigned for the votes. So I stand by the resign, Brandon Betts. Equally important, if not more, propaganda, the, the Andy Shore resignation that's always been on the table, it has never left. I know it's election season, but I want to take the opportunity to invite Andy Shore into a true accountability conversation because the trauma and the harm and the irreparable damage that your administration under your awful leadership has perpetuated just cannot be fixed, can't be fixed with appointed alliances, can't be fixed with photo ops, volunteering around the city, throwing money at churches and orgs and nonprofits. It simply cannot be fixed that way. And I want to point out that when we talk about justice, because you use that word a lot, you named your alliance justice, the racial equity, just racial justice and equity alliance, right? Do you even know what restorative justice is? I'll give you a really quick crash course because this is what you need to do. This is what you should have done. Number one, when you cause harm, you need to give a voice to those affected by the harm and you invite dialogue with those people. Number two, you work towards healing by addressing the harm. You've not done that. Number three, you seek direct accountability because anyone that's causing harm should be held accountable to the people that they've harmed. Number four, you need to repair the division that your harm has caused because your words and your actions have created division. They have created distrust in the community and you need to fix that. Number five, you need to strengthen the individuals and the community to prevent that further harm. If you have not done that, it is not justice. Election season doesn't give you a clean slate, slate just to campaign on. You don't get to just sweep it back under the rug and act like it never happened by not putting in any work to actually repair that harm. You still need to resign.
Thank you. Next, we have Julia Kramer, followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so I would like to uplift the invitation to accountability from Black Lives Matter that was read earlier. I really appreciate those words and I want to just voice my, my support for that statement. Brian, I want to say thank you so much for bringing these ordinances to the council for repeal. I think this is really exciting and is a step in the right direction. Brandon, you owe your constituents in word one, including myself and all Lansing residents at least a public statement about your harmful behavior and an apology. I agree that you should resign. I would really like to see you publicly take responsibility for the harm that you've caused. It's really disheartening to just see these meetings go on as normal, as if no harm has occurred and not see a public response. So I really would love to see that from you as someone who supported you. And yeah, I'd really love to see that. So I really, I'm really excited by all these conversations about accountability. I think that, you know, particularly in these times, all we have is each other and we have to keep each other accountable so that we can build trust and continue to work for a better future for our city. So I really appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you so much. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And then finally, we have Ethan Schmidt.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I want to start by thanking Brian T. Jackson for the really great work helping to update the code and make it make it a lot better. I hope this work continues. I know it can be very tedious and challenging. And I know that it's not really going to be a lot of fun to be at public hearings, but it is the work that ultimately makes a lot of difference toward the city's operation and justice in the city as well. So I hope that this goes beyond just laws that are obsolete and goes into laws that are actively damaging as well. And I hope the work continues. I hope we continue to go through this and the, we continue to push forward. There will always be people who panic immediately the second a law might be repealed, as you saw on this call, even though there was essentially nothing controversial about what was being proposed. It couldn't have been a more Manila repeal, and there were still people who called in and sounded panicked about the idea that we could repeal any law. So I hope that that doesn't scare you off from continuing to do things like this because honestly, it doesn't matter what you do that's going to happen. And so you might as well continue to do the good things. I would also like to, of course, sit in here in support of Black Lives Matter and encourage the council and the mayor to reimagine policing, reimagine a society in which we don't punish people. We tried to rehabilitate, we tried to support and we tried to attack the problem at the source where people don't feel as if they are trapped into crimes. We don't have people go from school to prison. attack the problem at the source where people don't feel as if they are trapped into crimes. We don't have people go from school to prison. And we don't have a society where a punishment is, e- even the punishments themselves are unequal, given that a $200 fine means a lot more to someone making minimum wage than someone making millions of dollars. We have to do the hard work and reimagine this and we have to continue to support grassroots movements that stand up where others don't have the courage to, even at great personal cost, as we see with Michael Lynn losing, losing his job over an issue that I still think is, at best, extreme, extreme sensitivity from Daryl Green. And I think we need to do better. So thank you for listening. Thank you for all you do. And I thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for the evening.
Very good. That concludes the business for the council. And at ten thirty one PM, we are adjourned.